We'll call the April 3 meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, then the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Buskerud.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time Judge Davis will administer the oath of office to the county board of equalization members, which are the commissioners.
It really wasn't true that we're all going to jail this morning, huh?
This is the law in court. They want to be sued, just raise your right hand. I state your name and repeat after me.
Aye, I can do this.
A member of the Board of Equalization?
A member of the Board of Equalization.
For Pennington County?
For Pennington County.
State of South Dakota?
State of South Dakota.
For the year 2012?
For the year 2012.
The first duly sworn?
Duly sworn.
The pose and say?
The pose and say.
That I will fully and impartially?
Fully and impartially.
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
As a member of the Board of Equalization?
As a member of the Board of Equalization.
For the county and the state?
For the county and the state.
That I will endeavor?
That I will endeavor.
To equally assess all real property?
To equally assess all real property within the county.
Within the county. That I will seek to place?
That I will seek to place.
Upon the tax books of the jurisdiction?
Upon the tax books of the jurisdiction.
Within the county?
Within the county.
Any property?
Any property.
That may have been omitted by error?
That may have been omitted by error.
Or neglect?
Nor neglect.
Of the assessor or Board of Equalization?
The assessor or the Board of Equalization.
I will faithfully and impartially?
I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform all other acts?
Form all other acts.
Enjoined on me by law?
Enjoined on me by law.
To the end?
To the end.
That all assessments?
That all assessments.
For Pennington County?
For Pennington County.
May be complete?
May be complete.
And just and equal?
Just and equal.
Between the property holders?
Between the property holders.
All set?
Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions on the agenda? Hearing none, Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve the agenda, second. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we go to the consent agenda, which is items six through thirteen. Includes approval of the minutes of the March 20 meeting, approval of the vouchers, approval of the joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Department of Military, a general fund supplement which will be heard on the 17th of April, another one, item ten, same thing, approval of the Hawthorne and Ditch Agreement, approval of the 2012 Bridge Inspection Program Resolution, and number thirteen, is that to be pulled from the agenda? Okay, that's the authorization to purchase from the state contrast tract list for bulk diesel and gas products. Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to remove number eight, please.
Number eight? That will be removed from the consent agenda, any other items? With the removal of item number eight, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as amended with item eight pulled from it. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We now go to item eight, Commissioner Buskerud.
Mr. Chairman, I pull that just for the reason that my wife helped negotiate that contract and I wanted to abstain from the vote on that particular item.
Any further comments about item number eight? Again, that's the approval of the joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Department of Military for West Emergency Services Communication Tower. Any other comments? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item eight, called for the vote with Commissioner Buskerud abstaining, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That's the end of the consent agenda and we now move to item fourteen, resolution for forming an Eastern Pennington County Ambulance District.
Thirteen, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me. What did you say?
I think you have to go to number thirteen, though we didn't pull that out.
That was on the consent agenda.
I thought we pulled it off.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just asked a question.
Okay.
Item fourteen, who's the spokesperson for the, this issue?
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to meet with you folks this morning. And as you know, the reason we're here is to, to try to form an ambulance district for Eastern Pennington County. My name is Pete Dunker, I'm a council member for the city of Wall and I've been appointed as a chairman for this committee and we've worked extremely hard over the past few months gathering all the information and trying to find an affordable and easy way to bring this on to the people and the taxpayers and I believe we've done that. The, the main problem we have here is that our ambulance district is, is extremely short on volunteerism anymore, as is other organizations across the country and, and we're at the point where we can no longer operate as we're doing at present and we need to find additional funding to, to support the ambulance service. And in order to do that, we've, we've tried to figure out an ambulance district, trying to set up a tax district, so to speak, and we have a very large district out there. We're, we're serving forty miles north of Wall, twenty-five miles south of Wall, and about fifteen miles east and west. So it's quite a big area and it's extremely important to us out there that we maintain an ambulance service. We have all the equipment that's, that's necessary and we simply need to, to switch to some kind of a paid service and we have been doing that by some means in the last two years. We've used approximately thirty thousand dollars a year out of our, out of our contingency fund or savings in the ambulance service to, to balance that budget. And the city has been very good in, in trying to help balance that budget also and, and the city has designated a great portion of our sales tax dollars to the, to the continuation of that budget for the next few years. And that's up to fifty thousand dollars a year we're going to put into this fund. So I guess what, what we really need to do is we've tried to find that affordable way and, and the tax district that we're proposing is basically the same district or the same area that the nine-one-one emergency service district that has been working in the past few years. We haven't changed those boundaries at all, we're just trying to, and that seems to be, to be working, it's the, seems to be the most economical way and, and the fastest way to service those people. Of course, we've got people on the outskirts of all the, the areas that take longer to be serviced and that's, that's just a, a point that's, that's going to happen. Some people are going to get serviced faster than others, but we seem to be servicing those people in a timely manner to, to maintain our, to maintain our service and our, our criteria that must be met for state regulations and, so I guess at this time, I'd like to have Larry come up. Larry Gravat has been hired by the city to, to help with this project and put all the facts and figures together and he's worked with the county agencies, also the state agency. And basically they've turned these statutes inside out trying to find a fair and equitable way to, to, to raise these funds and I believe we've done that and at this point I'd like Larry to come ahead. Thanks, Larry.
Well, thank you, Pete, and thank you for the opportunity to come forward and visit with you folks this morning. First of all, I'm kind of sorry to say that there was no member of this Wall ambulance district that participated in the winnings of the big lottery, the Megal Williams Lottery. So therefore we were unable to form some type of an endowment, you know, type of funding to keep the ambulance district going. And so, you guessed it, here I am. I'm here to ask you for your support and the passage of the resolution that would establish an Eastern Pennington County ambulance district. I, in your packet, you have a narrative that was submitted to the Pennington County Commissioners to reference the Wall ambulance district. I hope that you folks have had a chance to review that. I'm just going to touch on some of the high points so that we don't take a lot of time and then we do have some people in the audience that I would like to call on that would kind of come in, the residents of that area, to speak in favor of, of the ambulance district. We started out in the middle of January. We emphasized that the need, these rural ambulance services, folks, are basically being forced into a paid staff situation. The volunteers are just not there, the requirements to become an EMT are becoming tougher and tougher every year, the renewal requirements for annual hourly that these people have to take is just making it very difficult for volunteers to continue operating an ambulance service. To do that, you need to generate a revenue that is stable and something that you can rely on so that you can go out and go talk to VOTEC people or talk to the people of Rapid City or, and try to virtually bring people in and pay them a wage that is as feasibly possible that the budget would allow to try to keep this ambulance service going. It's extremely important, we're not pulling any punches here, folks, if we don't come up with a revenue source, there will not be an ambulance service in Wall. We saw Underwood go to the wayside, we're seeing problems down in Kadoka possibly and around in, in, ending South Dakota and different things like that. This is a real problem, folks, and we need to address it and we need to address it so that we can generate a revenue that is reliable, that we can generate employees and pay employees as such. Lindell has been to our public meetings, has kind of helped us walk this thing through and I feel that we have gained good support. We're, I'm never going to stand up here and tell you we got a hundred percent support because we're not going to have it. Our first public meeting, the Ag people came to us and said, could you possibly work out a way of taking our Ag properties out and just assessing our houses? We were able to do that. We met with the auditor and attorneys and we were able to do that. Then on the middle of February, we held our second public meeting. That was kind of an informational meeting. I tried to use an example of different valuations of property. Ninety percent of the property in this ambulance district is valued at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or below. The maximum assessment by law that can ever be assessed against those properties is a dollar and ten cents per thousand of assessed factored valuation. So, and that is in two different criterias. There is an operating maximum of point six oh per thousand, there's a capital outlay budget max levy of point five oh. So the maximum that these people would ever be assessed by state law is one dollar and ten cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Ninety percent of the structures and commercial properties in that area are below a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty percent of those are below fifty. About half the people at maximum would be paying somewhere between fifty-five and sixty dollars per household to support the ambulance district of Wall, South Dakota. So we presented that in a PowerPoint presentation and then we passed out kind of a sample ballot and there was approximately sixty-some people in attendance and there was forty-eight for and six against. So we had approximately in that meeting that I'm going to convey to you approximately about a ninety percent approval of, of that deal. And at this time, I would like to call on one of our supporters, Mary Williams, she's with the chamber in Wall and she's also a landowner in rural Pennington County and a business lady and I'd like to ask Mary to come forward and speak.
Thank you, Larry. I guess the bottom line is that the Wall community needs an ambulance and nothing is free anymore and so we need to find another way to provide funds to have an ambulance. I think Larry and Pete have done a good job of involving all the stakeholders in this plan and they've worked out a very fair tax structure between city and Ag residents, perhaps even favoring agriculture more so than the city. And if you use the figures that he just presented, five dollars a month is minimal to have an ambulance when you need one. So my husband, Myron, and I support this proposal.
Thank you, Mary, and I'd like to call on Jim Kerstedt, if he could please come forward, he's a landowner and a businessman of the area.
Thank you, Larry. My family resides in Eastern Pennington County where we farm and ranch there. The extent of my involvement in this proposal is that of a concerned citizen and I had three basic concerns when this issue arose. Number one, that we find a way to fund a viable, high-quality ambulance service, keep it going, such as we have. Number two, that it be funded responsibly and fairly across this district. And number three, that we maintain local control. And after attending the last informational meeting there in Wall, I got to commend the people that worked on this proposal because I think they listened to the concerns of the people in this district and have come up with a sound, sensible proposal that does responsibly fund this district and it funds it in a fair, very fair manner. Number two, I believe that they maintained local control, which I think is crucial to the service of maintaining a high-quality status. And number, and number three, I think that, number three, I believe that this is a issue that we need and, and have to have. Furthermore, I believe that the overwhelming majority of the taxpayers in this district propose, support this proposal as it is currently and therefore I'm here to ask the commissioners to support this resolution and give us the power to provide a crucial service to Eastern Pennington County. Thank you.
Thank you, and Norman Eisenbrow is here, he's kind of bashful in speaking, but he's a past member of the ambulance service and a member of the Wall community and he's very much in favor of the ambulance district. So in conclusion, I would like to draw on those, kind of those five points at the end of my narrative that you have in your deal. I believe that we have established the vital imperative need to have an ambulance service to service the Eastern Pennington County area. That passage of this resolution would expedite the formulation of such an important project because keep in mind what we do today, we do not generate that revenue for two years. That the public support is overwhelmingly strong enough to merit passage of the district by resolution in lieu of a special election. That passage of this resolution would save the cost and the time of a special election and allow our committee to advance to the operational formation of the ambulance service, development of the bylaws and the management. That the passage of this resolution still allows the opposition the opportunity to bring it to vote should they feel the necessity to do this. And so with that, I thank you for your time and a specific thanks to Lindell for attending our meetings and kind of keeping track of what we were doing down there and that. And I wished we'd have been in on the lottery, folks, but we weren't. So I'm asking for your support and your passage of that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I think we have others who wish to comment on this issue. If you'd step forward, please, at this time.
Hello, I'm Martha Witcher, clerk of Emily Township. Our board had an advertised meeting last night, they made a statement that would like to be read to the commission on how they feel about this proposed district. I'll read it as they presented it. In regarding the resolution of the proposed Wall ambulance district, we as a township board are against this proposed district for several reasons. First, we don't want to give up our local control of our taxing district. Second, it is thirty-four miles to Wall, but if you drive the speed limit, it takes fifty minutes. Other than the ten miles of Highway 44, the maximum speed is fifty-five miles to twenty miles due to the Pinnacle's Road in the Badlands National Park. There are eight miles of gravel road that are in wet times, water runs over the road and many soft spots are in the road. In the park, the Pinnacle's Road is the last to be cleaned in the winter due to not having school kids driving that road. In the summertime, the Pinnacle's Road is covered with tourists and there are no shoulders for them to pull off if the ambulance is trying to come down. On this route, you could not exceed the speed limit for the ambulance. On Highway 44 from Rapid City, it is a straight road with shoulders and is cleared by the highway department in a fast and efficient manner. We are fifty miles from the Thrift Center, which is over on East St. Patrick Street. Also, the Rapid City ambulance could meet the patient en route if need be. We are, our clerk is in contact with Jason Culversen, who is with the Rapid City ambulance service. In accordance with the state law eight-nine-seven, we are having dialogue with him about being in a contract with them to be included in Med 4. There are steps he has to take and studies he has to do before he can have a meeting with us. We don't understand why our township should provide tax dollars for a service we don't want from Wall. We ask the commissioners to take out the legal description for Emily Township number twenty-four from this proposed ambulance district. Three south, fifteen east, four south, fifteen east, four south, fourteen east. And as you see, our whole board signed this letter to the commission.
Any questions, comments?
Yes.
Commissioner?
If, if, if the resolution is passed as it is right now, you, you still have your authority to, as a township, to tax for your township functions.
We understand, we understand that.
So it's not, it wouldn't remove any of your taxing authority.
Right, we understand that, but what, what also our understanding and talking to the people that we have talked to, we'd like to have the, the authority to contract. We could contract with Wall, we could contract with Rapid City, we would like to, as our township, be able to put forth what our patrons of our township want. And that's what we would like to have as a say in what we want.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Commissioner?
Well, we have a, a map here, can you kind of show me where you're located, where your township is, please? So I can get an idea. I appreciate it.
I haven't seen this map, but I can share it with you.
Hopefully it's kind of...
So, I don't know, we are, there's one, I'm, anyway, this is the Kanata Basin, so this is ten miles to the Kanata Basin. Well, this is that gravel road we were talking about and this goes up through, this goes up through the Badlands National Park. I'm assuming this is one eighty-five, this is where one of our patrons and then our houses, that guy over here, and then the boundary line is like right here.
Okay.
Does that help at all?
Yeah, because I was trying to figure out, so what you're really kind of is this area right here.
Well, I'll go up a little bit.
Okay. All right. That'll, that helps.
Does that kind of, that's why we're saying we're only four miles from the proposed district of the boundary line. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Commissioners, my name is Charles Cruz, I represent the Castle Butte Township, which is in the very corner of Eastern Pennington County. Larry comes up and tells, talks about how fair this tax is. Well, it's great for the people of Wall, they have the Wall ambulance there and they're in Wall, but I happen to be thirty miles away from Wall where I reside, plus the ambulance has to come down through the Badlands National Park, which in the summertime is crowded with tourists and is a very windy and, and shoulderless road. I have, as you know, the Ag, agriculture is real low profit margins and I've had to add my aunt's place to my place just to survive, so I have three different houses on my Ag property. I will be taxed pretty close to four hundred dollars a year if this resolution goes through. Not only will I have to pay four hundred dollars a year for Wall's ambulance, but if I need that ambulance, I'm charged twenty-four dollars a mile, which is around seven hundred dollars if they come, plus the time for everybody onboard. I will pay three or four times as much as the people in Wall for the ambulance service after paying four hundred dollars a year. I could buy ambulance insurance for probably less than a hundred dollars a year, which would pay a hundred percent of my ambulance, um, cost. And I live one point five miles, our Castle Butte Township is one point five miles from Interior, which has emergency medical service through the fire department there. I am an EMR and have taken over a hundred hours of training for, to be an EMR and I volunteer for that and, and I volunteer to go out on calls which would cover our area from the Interior Fire Department. We cannot transport, but if I have somebody in my family that is hurt, I'm going to transport. I'm not going to wait forty-five minutes for the Wall ambulance to get to my place, plus the amount of time it takes them to get to another forty-five minutes at least to get to, um, um, emergency care. And Interior Fire Department can do the same, put oxygen on and stop bleeding as the ambulance in Wall. And I'm against this ambulance district. Not only that, then Castle Butte Township at their annual meeting discussed this and we do not want to be in this ambulance district. We, it was voted as a hundred percent that we're against this resolution and we're against this ambulance, ambulance district. If, if you look at the information that Larry put together, half of the calls are in, are responded to inside the town of Wall and then you will see that a lot of the, a lot more of the calls are on the I-90 district. If the, this is servicing the people of Wall and the people that are tourists that are coming on I-90, it's fair and equitable that it is a, a sales tax for the town of Wall, which it has been. And if the ambulance would be living within their being... If, if you look at the information that Larry put together, half of the calls are in, responded to inside the town of Wall, and then you will see that a lot of the, a lot more of the calls are on the I ninety district. If the, this is servicing the people of Wall and the people that are tourists that are coming on I ninety, it's fair and equitable that it is a, a sales tax for the town of Wall, which it has been. And if the ambulance would be living within their means, they've got two three hundred thousand dollar ambulances. Not only that, they have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in savings. They're, they don't need this ambulance district, they don't need to be taxing me, they need to figure out how to live within their means and to, uh, um, uh, continue the tax that they have. And I, I'm not in favor of paying four hundred dollars a year for the Wall ambulance, and I'm, I'm not in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Charles, if, if I may, I think, I think what I'm really hearing you say is that you do not want to be included in the district, that you're not against.
No, I'm not against the, them forming a district, I just don't want to be included in it.
And, and that leads me to the point, I think, Larry, it was in, in the last meeting, there was an indication that there needed to be some communication with the nine-one-one people, maybe an examination of the areas, the, the boundaries, in such a way that it was more clearly understood who responded to what. And...
And that's correct. And the next thing on the agenda is the fire district, and we're, we're trying to get that, that change because we're one point five miles from the...
We'll take that when we come.
Yeah.
Yeah, please. Jay, is there, is there any process that we can enter into at this time that would exclude the area that, that's being discussed right now with this resolution and still proceed with the resolution?
What you're asking is to essentially amend the resolution as it's currently drafted to have a different set of boundaries?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, if we, if we knew that exactly today, we could probably get on the computer and get it done, and you could sign it today, if you wanted to go that route.
If it's agreeable with the commission and with all parties, Jay and whoever could work that out and come back, we could postpone action on this issue. And once that correction is made, then we could go forward. Is that agreeable with you folks?
I think so. And, you know, the only thing that I would like to caution the commission on, and please correct me if I hear, is if we take...
Devin, come to the mic. Come up, come up to the microphone, please.
If we take an entire township, for example, let's just say the Emily Township, and there may be areas in that township that really aren't feasibly serviced. For example, if you're up in here and here's Wall, and you say, well, we're going to just take this all out, and you want your Rapid City people to come down through here, just logistically, there may be like the Deitcher residents, or, excuse me, the Deitcher resident or some of these people here that actually could be better serviced out of Wall. They, people have a very valid point, and, and we will assist them and we'll work with them in every way possible that we can. We just think that we need to, I don't think today we can come up so abstract and say, we'll take this out and we'll take this out, and we leave this in. I think we need to have more of a logistic demographic line.
So it sounds like it's not necessarily a legal question at this point, it's kind of a practical get-together and figure-it-out question.
Right.
Okay. Based on, on these comments and these observations, if this, if you head down that road and you seek to, to clarify the nine-one-one boundaries and those things, and then exclude the properties in the area that could best be serviced by Rapid City, would it impact you terribly to do that and come back to the seventi, April seventeenth meeting?
You actually have the resolution that...
Yeah, the resolution that we have right now, Jay, is, is this, this legal description right here coincides with the nine-one-one boundary map, which is right here, right here.
I guess what I'm saying is that I don't know what your legal description would end, so somebody would need to do that.
Exactly right. We would need to contact the Director of Equalization.
Right.
And to get those legal descriptions changed. Yeah, it, it might push us in a couple of weeks, I guess, to get it, but we could sure try to.
Well, and I don't mean to be interfering with, with your plan of action here, but I, I think if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. And I, I think it would be prudent to include whoever you need to in the nine-one-one category to make sure everyone's on the same page. Is, is that feasible?
It is with me, I guess.
Yeah. I, I don't know what part I haven't, I guess what I'm saying is, you've got the resolution and you know the people and can come up with a legal description.
Well, I, I guess what I would feel, if I'm wrong here, Peter, we would have to get the people together, Charlie and Martha, and is Mike Greer Camp involved in this deal, the C W Township and that, and try to come up with a revised boundary. The thing that I'm cautioning you on a little bit, Lindell, is I'm not saying that this revised boundary is still going to get a hundred percent approval, but it'll, I can come to you and say, this is better served by Rapid City and this portion is better served by Wall. I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that I can promise you that we can take the whole Emily Township out of this boundary and be a workable plan.
In, in that respect, you know, I guess, nothing's perfect, but my concern is that if we, if we don't recognize the challenge and, and the practical aspects of this, and we adopt it the way it is and then try to back parts of it out, it may be far more complex than, than if we take a timeout and, and work on those issues. What's your wish as a commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask one question, and if I get the right answer, I'll make a motion. Would two weeks be enough to get this done, or would you just prefer that we postpone it until such time that you come back and, and, or call in and ask to be put on the agenda?
Some of the... Some, some of the timing is going to relate to activating your, your revenue stream on, on the sequence as it relates to assessments and budgets and that sort of thing.
I got a couple of questions first. Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions. Julie, how much would an election cost to have an election in this area? Any idea, roughly?
It would, because the area is smaller than a, than a countywide, I think we could do it for less than five thousand.
Yeah, who pays for that?
Um...
Those of them, the district?
Usually, they, they conduct it, we just help get it ready.
How many precincts or voting places would you have in that election?
We would probably use the existing precincts up there. We have Creighton, Wall, Wasta, um, I don't know if we still have White.
I mean, I'm trying to...
We'd, we'd use the same, same ones that we do for our election, instead of calling them all into one because the, the driving distance is so far. The biggest expense, of course, is going to be printing up ballots, which for this election, we just do them by hand count, and the precinct workers.
Thank you. Commissioner, hello, I hear.
I just have a couple of questions, I guess, as it relates to this resolution. Number one, have, you know, you indicated that we're just going to impose this on residential property and commercial property, and you talked about a dollar and ten cents per thousand. Is, have you, have you based that dollar and ten cents on what your need is for revenue and what the value of the property is that you're assessing this on?
No, that's set by state statute. The state statute thirty-four dash law says that the maximum that any ambulance district can assess is fifty cents per thousand for operating, pardon, sixty cents for operating, fifty cents for capital outlay. So that is set by state law.
So, and, and you're going to assess the maximum, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, you, right. On the operating side of it, that is correct, because when we took the ag land out, we reduced that total pie that we had to be almost at max of fifty-five cents. But keep in mind that still, with the reduction, is only like a, a majority of the people between fifty and sixty dollars.
Larry, would you speak up to that mic, please?
Sure, I'm sorry.
So if you left the ag land in, what would that assessment have to be?
Well, originally, when we had the ag land in, and this is strictly an estimate, it kind of came out about that twenty-five cent range.
Twenty-five cents?
Yeah.
For the whole assessment?
Uh, for the operating part of it.
For the operating.
Yeah, there still could be a capital outlay. See, the capital outlay is, is for supply, or pardon me, equipment and that purchased, so that would be handled separately.
Well, it seems to me, and, and it seems to me like the ag land for the farmers and ranchers is their commercial aspect of, of their business. And so, so we're exempting the commercial aspect of their business, but yet the other commercial operators in that area, we're not exempting them. So it would seem like if we're just going to put it against residential property, then we should do that for everybody. Or if we're going to assess the commercial for the non-ag people, then we should assess the commercial for the ag people, if, if it's going to be fair.
The way I answered that question, Don, before, is, and I know, the ag product, we can't go to the, we can't market that. If we take our cattle to the sale that day, we get that price that we get for our calves, for example. If we've got a motel in Wall, for example, and the assessed valuation of that is a hundred thousand dollars, and it's sixty dollars or whatever it would be on the assessment, then they can kind of add a factor in that, they can kind of, they have that ability to factor that into their operations where we as ag people, so to speak, don't have. And secondly, I use this example. I said, if you have a heart attack victim and he's sitting there in your motel, or he's there in the store or something like that and has it, and isn't that a pretty cheap insurance policy that you could have versus getting an ambulance virtually minutes away from your store versus an hour away from Rapid?
You know, I, I don't disagree with you, but it just seems like we're taxing, we're, we're only taxing a portion of the people. And, and, and I don't see that as being equal in taxation. And, and frankly, you say, somebody could be sitting in the motel and have a heart attack, but somebody could be riding out across the pasture and have a heart attack as well. Or you could have a, a combine crew out there who has an accident. And so, I don't think...
The other way to kind of look at it is this way, Don, is the, the total valuations, if we threw the ag properties in, is approximately a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. We take those ag people out, which takes away about approximately a million dollars. And it's like the gentleman touched earlier, these people came to us and said, okay, now let's, let's take, you've got basically two-thirds of your valuation on our ag land versus the residential, commercial properties. Now tell us how many times that ambulance came out to our property. And I did, I factored that in. And about one-third of the calls went to the rural area, and they were paying two-thirds of the cost of the operation. So then I backed that down in perspective and took our thirty-six thousand dollars with the fifty-five cent mill levy, and it should come out, that thirty-six thousand dollars, when I assess that to the, to the forty million of, of town property and the, breaking out the ag properties, it came out almost percentage to the use of the service.
But, but again, if you're, if you're on the other side of the fence on that issue, there's people that live in houses or commercial operations that may never call the ambulance.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, yeah. And I, you know, and I haven't had a lot of commercial objections, to me, you know. I've had a couple, but I haven't had a lot of commercial objections. And the ironic part about Wall is, I will say this, is probably, this is kind of a figure, there's a very large percentage of that commercial property paid by very few people in Wall, a couple, three businesses, and they have shown us real strong support, Don.
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. This is for dispatch, Leanne. For Leanne. I'm, I'm curious how this works. If we pull out some of these townships and they call into nine-one-one, and let's say Interior doesn't have anybody that can send someone to an accident or whatever, what do you do then? Do you have some kind of joint agreement that you send the ambulance from somewhere else then?
Yes. We don't set those districts, the, the responders actually set the districts. We set the boundary lines in our computer system so that we send the right one, but if somebody from there, especially with so many volunteer services, if we don't have someone that can go, we have agreements with everyone to, to send the next closest person or the next closest responder.
So, so even though Interior, you might pull this township, C W Township, out and connect it with Interior, if they don't have somebody available, you're going to send Wall?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Or Rapid City.
Or Rapid City.
Or the helicopter.
Or the helicopter, yeah.
There, there's so many options that, that I, I just think it's important that, that we work to get on the same page, but...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might, before this meeting started, I was generally opposed to where, how this was going, I figured that I'd go to a vote of the people. But it looks to me like we're only two weeks apart with a little negotiation to have an answer for everybody. And if that would save the cost of an election and everybody, most everybody is satisfied, I would go along with that. And I, I don't hear a lot of, of statements against it if this situation with the townships can be worked out. And I think it can, but it looks to me like...
My name's Cliff McClure, I'm the chief of the Interior Fire Department. I'm here on another matter, but to comment on this, you know, Interior went medical three years ago. We didn't have it. We've done everything we can to help out Wall. Wall does, you know, a lot of things to help us out at the same token. As the fire department chief, I am staying out of the boundaries. You know, one thing, we, we have looked at it, and what I agree with is we probably need to sit down with nine-one-one and, you know, the other aspects and the township boards to figure out what we need to do. I know at one time, you know, Wall would like us to respond all the way to scenic for medical. And we have done that just of the aspect, because nine-one-one has called us out. We're not opposed to taking all that, but everybody needs to understand, we do not transport, you know. We are probably through that Canada Basin all the way to scenic, will be one of the fastest responders if we have people available to get somebody on scene and to give medical help and be able to justify whether we need to have ALS coming or a helicopter coming. Interior's worked very hard, we have over twelve EMRs, a couple EMTs. There's been very, very few times I can count in the last three years that we have not had anybody to respond. Dealing with the dispatchers, I mean, I'm, I'm proud to say Interior has really upped its game, brought its department up, and I'm, I'm proud to say that we have tried to do everything in our power to be one of the fastest. And that's the reason we do it, is to take care of our community and our community members. And, you know, we've gone as far as Rapid City. community and our community members. Um, and, you know, we've gone as far as Rapid City to help out with the rescue units and things like that. But I, I just wanted to comment on that. I believe it, it should be, we need to sit down and look at the lines. Um, and in the next issue that's coming up is, is that's another issue in the fire service part of it, is looking at the boundaries and the lines. And talking with Denny in the Fire Service Board, my feeling is, who can service the area better? You know, I'm not talking about taking a whole township over or anything like that. If we need to draw a line because Wall can get there faster, then that's what we need to do. I'm not all for boundaries. I'm who can service the area the quickest. Um, we've used Rapid City Fire many, many times. Them guys, when they come down forty-four, they have a straight shot, and they're fairly, fairly quick. Um, I've seen Rapid City beat Wall to scenic, um, just because they have a straight shot and we ain't, you ain't on a gravel road with a big, large unit. So if we can do this in a two-week manner, I mean, I would not be opposed to sit down with everybody to, as the chief and part of the Interior Department, to look at response areas and, and districts.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
I do have a question for you. How do you fund your ambulance?
We don't have an ambulance. Um, Interior Volunteer Fire Department is fully funded on donations alone. We don't have a tax district. Um, it gets a little more complicated in the Jackson County area because of the tribal land, and only forty-two percent of the land in Jackson County is technically taxable, because we have the Badlands National Park and, and things like that. But our medical and our fire service is a hundred and ten percent donation run by fundraisers and things, so. And we're in a fight just with everybody else, you know, trying to keep the money up there to be able to operate, so.
Thank you. I think part of what we're seeing and hearing here is the ability of rural America to take care of itself and, and solve its problems. And I hope, uh, we can facilitate that. Is there a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion, but I'm, I don't want to give you just two weeks if you don't think you can do it. I, I'll make a motion, but I don't wanna just have you, if you don't think two weeks will work, we should make the motion.
It will be my best shot.
Do you wanna do two?
Well, I had an idea, but...
Okay.
I'll just throw, I'll just throw my thoughts out with my motion, and I said I was gonna make a motion a little bit ago, that, that I just make a motion that we postpone this until such, such time that the all parties agreed, call into the office and put it back on the agenda. And then that way, it might take, two weeks, might be four weeks, but they'll have the ability to put it on themselves when they need it. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Next time you appear, we will be happy to hear how you've worked it out.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, item fourteen, and, uh, Charles and, and Cliff?
Um, commissioners, uh, the people of the Castleview Township have, uh, signed a petition to the township board that says, whereas the Castleview Township is authorized to contract for fire protection in South Dakota State Law eight-nine-four, and Castleview Township is one point five miles from Interior Volunteer Fire Department, and some residents of Castleview Township are members of the Interior Volunteer Fire Department, be it resolved that the following voters of the Castleview Township petitioned the township board to co, uh, contract with Interior Volunteer Fire Department for fire suppression. And this is, uh, kind of the same thing as the ambulance district. If, um, there's a fire in our township, um, and somebody calls into nine-one-one, Wall is paged out, because, um, even though, uh, I'll have Cliff come up here, um, he is the fire chief, even though we have dual, uh, I don't even know what it's called, dual response to the Kanata Basin area, like I say, we're one point five miles from the fire department, and, uh, Wall is thirty miles from, you know, from where I live. And, uh, so it's obvious that Interior can get there better and faster. So, uh, what, what this does is if, uh, um, you guys agree that, uh, we could, that the chief could sit down with, uh, Fire District and, uh, and set those lines, so that the first response would be Interior Volunteer Fire Department instead of the, uh, Wall Fire Department. This is, uh...
I'll give you guys all the, the copy of the petition that was given to the, thank you, to the cab board.
So, so what, what I'd be asking now is for the, um, uh, county commissioners to, um, petition the, the, um, uh, Fire Board to, uh, look at the fire lines, to who is the primary, uh, responder for the Kanata Basin area, where Castleview Township is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Uh, Denny?
Good morning, Denny. Gordon County Fire Administrator. Very quick recap of how this has always worked in the past thirty-plus years is the local fire chiefs get together, sit down, decide who can provide the best service, who can get there the quickest, however they want to work it out. They literally draw it on a map. They sign it on, the map on both sides of the border, um, and the fire chiefs work it out, and that's the way we've always done it. Um, so, that's fine. We can, we can look at it that way, but what we're gonna end up doing is asking the Wall Fire Chief, Jim Kiderman, we'll ask the scenic Fire Chief, Mike Lear Camp, and we'll ask, uh, the Interior Fire Chief, Cliff McClure, to all come in, sit down, let's figure it out. We'll draw it on a map. We'll present the map to, uh, Leanne over at dispatch. They'll redraw the response boundaries, and that's it.
Yeah.
And there is no, there is no fire protection. The, uh, the Wall, scenic, and Interior are not rural fire protection districts, so.
So what kind of a, an action do we need to take?
Um, I understand what Mr. Cruz is saying, but I'm not real sure the commissioners really need to do anything. We'll just get those three fire chiefs to sit down and figure it out. Be done.
So, uh, you saying that and, um, these folks hearing it, if between the two of you, you don't work it out, then what?
Well, quite honestly, I'm not sure I see a, a reason not to, um, I'll say have Interior cover that area. Certainly, if they're only a mile or less than two miles from that area, that certainly makes sense, so. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Leanne, we're already paging the Interior Fire Department out of our dispatch center, so there's no major shifts or changes there that need to be accomplished, so.
Are you comfortable with this, Charles? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, Mr. Chair, for me?
Yes.
Denny, the, the, once the fire chiefs get together and figure out where the lines are, then the levy that is placed for, uh, this rural fire, um, levy that is put on, is the money then from that geographic area goes to that particular volunteer fire department? Is that, is that how that works?
No, 'cause...
Okay.
Uh, Interior, Wall, and scenic, none, well, none of those three are rural fire protection districts, okay? The, and I'm not sure what it's called on the tax bill. I call it the county fire levy, um, that funds the county fire. This office, my office, uh, is over the entire county. That money isn't, uh, separated or split out, uh, with a certain amount going to any fire department.
So when they, when the gentleman was up and talking about this state statute, uh, eight-nine-four, which talks about townships being able to contract, there's not a money exchange in this contract?
Not in this partic, I don't see there's one in this particular instance, anyway.
And, and the county fire levy that we get, that doesn't get, uh, administered back to the rural fire departments?
No. It, it funds this office where we pay the workers comp, uh, workers' compensation insurance, um, all the infrastructure, radio costs, um...
And so then the fire departments just, uh, they're all, uh, whatever they can raise voluntarily then?
Yes, or through their...
There's not another mill levy for them?
Correct. Or through their rural fire protection districts where they have a, a pick on the North Haynes Volunteer Fire Department, has a rural fire protection district, as does Rapid Valley or Johnson Siding. Any of those?
Do they levy funds for that?
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Yeah. The one thing that changes is that if we, if Interior Fire Department covers officially part of Painton County, then the Fire Service Board allows them to come in in what we consider being equal with every other fire department in Painton, because they're protecting Painton County residents and property. So that means they can make requests, and they can come in and talk to the Fire Service Board, and if they need something, the Fire Service Board will review that request, just as if it was Rapid Valley or Johnson Siding or Hill City or any of them. Doesn't mean they always get it, 'cause we don't ever guarantee that with any department, but they can make that request.
Any other questions or comments?
Just that, um, I remember being at some of the Fire Service District, um, or Fire Service Board meetings, and I, I really feel like the fire departments work together, and they don't, I, I've never seen them be territorial. They just wanna cover the, to the best of their abilities, the areas that, that they're assigned. I don't think there's gonna be an issue. I guess if there is, it comes back to us, but I really would be very surprised to see any issue.
One thing here is that since there are no rural fire protection districts, there are no legal taxing entity boundaries that we have to move, change, uh, do by, you know, go through that process. So this is just an agreed-upon area, and I can't imagine the three fire chiefs can't get together and decide it.
Yeah.
Cliff, did you have some comments?
You know, just a quick comment, like, uh, I've said before, I've spoke with Denny on this issue. I've spoke with, um, Jim Kiderman on the issue at the same token. I have not been able to speak with, um, Mike Lear Camp. But like I have spoke with Denny, I'm sure that we can get together. Um, we can work this out. The, the biggest thing, like I said, I'm not fighting for boundaries. I'm just trying to provide a service. Um, that's my job as chief of the fire department to make sure that we are providing the service to the community members around. Um, yes, a couple years ago, they have voted to take in the Castleview Township, and, um, there's been talk of the Kanata Township at the same token. Um, and that is fine. Um, I think, again, it comes down to the nine-one-one mapping where us as chiefs and emergency personnel need to sit down and, and look at response times, um, and the response districts, because one question I do have, I have a large map with us, but I didn't think we needed to take that out, because I think it's up to us as the departments to get it figured out and work with community members. And if we can't do that, then we'll have to come back to you. But, you know, the Kanata Township goes clean into the Badlands National Park and on the north side of the Badlands National Park. We can't beat you. We can't beat Wall there. Um, to just let you know how we've done it in the past, Phillip Fire, which is in Hocken County, comes into Jackson County, which technically is supposed to be our service area, but they have a straight shot down Highway fourteen and can beat us. We have to come up through the Badlands National Park, and then we're on a gravel road all the way to fourteen. We can't beat them, so we have them take that section. Again, it's probably the same as what we'll be doing with Wall and, and everybody else is figuring out. Wall at times, yes, it's, it's a pain to get down through that park to get on the southern side of the park. Um, so it's, it's figuring out where to draw the boundary lines. I know with nine-one-one, you, they don't like to have roads, so we gotta do section lines and, and addresses to, to make sure, um, you know, that we're doing it fairly. I don't wanna have you guys turn around and say, okay, you're gonna take, you know, Castleview, you're gonna take Kanata and oh-nine yards. Well, when Wall can get to this residence in ten minutes, and it's gonna take us twenty-five, that's my issue that I'm looking at.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to the forty-first day.
So, and like Denny said, there's no, there's no money being fought over here, uh, that, that I know of.
Give me just a second.
I mean, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment?
Yes.
As, as a taxpayer in Pennington County, I pay a fire tax on every parcel of ground I've got. I've been the chief of the Interior Fire Department, and I've been on the Interior Fire Department, um, boy, for, for thirty-plus years. And, uh, um, we, we have, uh, the same thing that this gentleman has. We gotta pay our workman's comp for our firefighters, and we've gotta pay, uh, fuel bills when we go out on a fire. And, uh, when we're responding to an area in Pennington County, what this does, and what this does with the Castleview Townships, gives the chief the ability to come to these guys and say, well, we need another radio, or we need this, and then they can approve that. And that's what it, that, that's what this basically does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha?
Sorry. Didn't know we were gonna be talking about this, but I'm clerk of the township. Just to give you, just some information, for Emily Township, we provide in accordance with the state law, our own fire protection with our general fund. We buy sprayers for our pickups for our, our township. But just like everyone has said, if scenic needs help, we go to scenic. If Interior needs help, we go there. They come here, they come there. We don't, I would have to go back to our board, but we don't wanna be in any district whatsoever. But I don't really know what's going on here, but I just wanna let you know how we provide is our township for our fire protection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This looks to me like a deal that you said just a little bit ago. This is rural America taking care of itself, and the government doesn't need to get involved.
That's right. Let's move to item sixteen. Items from the auditor. And you are liberty to move from A, B, and C at will.
Pardon?
Move from A, B, and C at will.
Okay. The first one is the County Fair Supplement. Um, as the board recalls, every year, you give the Central State's Fair a hundred thousand dollars for different types of improvements out there. And one of the advantages of them being in their own fund is that it doesn't go back into, if they don't spend it, it doesn't go back into the general fund, black hole, as often is referred to. It stays within their own fund and has to be spent there. And this is money left over from the 2011 budget and was not budgeted, actually, in the 2012 to spend, so we need to approve the supplement for the 2012 County Fair Fund operating budget in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from restricted fund balance. And this is for the blacktopping bid out there. And I believe Mr. Jeffries is here, if you have any questions.
If, that money just stays in that fund, can we never get it out of there?
Yes. No. It's a special levy fund.
So am I voting no unless I think I do much good?
No, 'cause the money'll just stay in there and has to be spent on the fair.
Might make you feel better.
It will.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the general fund supplement. That's presented.
Just a second.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the general fund supplement to the County Fair Fund. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
It makes me feel a little better.
What you can do is just not budget that next year, but then you have to get that passed. The next one is, um, as the board may recall, in the last couple years, Pennington County's different departments have started to, um, host, if you will, different conferences. And with that comes expenses, receipting in, um, the registration fees, expensing out the money. Well, the last one we did, we let them set up their own type of accounting and, and funding, and it was separate and did not run through the county books, and the DLA gave us an F on that effort. And so what we're asking for is that the, um, Sheriff Office is requesting, and they're going to host a Northwest Shuttle Conference. And what they need to do is we need to bring those expenses and revenues into the Pennington County... County books and expense them out of there, just like any other budget. So to, uh, properly, um, do that and be able to host that conference, we need to approve the supplement of the 2012 General Fund Northwest Shuttle Conference budget in the amount of $75,000 from the non-budgeted revenues received in the current year, and to approve all conference expenses ahead of time, so that when they get a conference bill, they can pay it, and then we can list it in the minutes at that time. This is just the proper accounting way for any time we host a conference. And the $75,000 is coming from the registration fees.
Any discussion?
Julie, the, the, so this would be a special budget-
Yes.
Just for this?
Just for this.
If we're preapproving those conference expenses, it'll be up, up to the amount of, of, uh, not to exceed the 75,000?
That's correct. Anything over that. And we'll list them in the, in the next concurring minutes.
That, that would be my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? Any discussion, any comments from the public? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The third one is to approve, um, a supplement to the pandemic flu, which is from restricted fund balance of money that we've received from, from grants in 2006, '07, and '08. And they now are, um, only supplementing it when they have the actual expenditures rather than in the past, which we were graded poorly on supplementing any remaining balance, just kept supplementing it forward, and now we're just bringing forward the supplements as we need them. Um, so what this one is, is to provide 20,000 for, uh, 2012 Emergency Management Pandemic Flu Supplement from restricted fund balance in that fund. And that, again, is kept separate.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. Any comments from the public, from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Davis.
Julie, do you know the 20,000, is that going to, any of that going to go towards flu shots, or is that what it's for, or is this just a, a conference to talk about pandemics?
Dustin is here, and he can equate to that.
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Well, Penning County Emergency Manager. Um, there are several different grants that were awarded in, in '06, '07, and '08 that go into this. Um, a lot of that money was used to set up our, our pandemic flu, uh, points of dispension, where we did do the flu shots. Uh, the actual flu shots are actually paid through the Department of Health through a, a separate grant. Uh, this $20,000 supplement today is, in addition to the $30,000 that, uh, that my predecessors are budgeted in for this year, uh, and it's actually a, a community preparedness initiative. It's a public education campaign, Being Prepared is Simple, uh, and, and covers pandemic, covers points of dispension, doesn't go to pay for actual flu shots. Uh, this, this supplement that we're asking for right now doesn't. Um, to address your question, though, uh, for two years, almost three years in a row, I'm not sure if we did a third, uh, for at least two years in a row, we did do, uh, points of dispension where we gave flu shots, uh, in partnership with the Department of Health, and that's a program that, that I want to continue. It's a great exercise, allows us to exercise our point of dispensing. So we will continue to do that, uh, in subsequent years. We haven't done it in the last couple of years.
Okay, so part of this, and I presume, as I understand, is total 50,000.
Mm-hmm.
Will you use some of that money for that purpose?
Not this year, no.
So we're just going to spend $50,000 going out and telling people they ought to get a flu shot?
Uh, a flu shot, the pandemic is, is a small part of that public education campaign. The overall picture, the big picture that, that EM is taking on this is, emergency management is a function of planning, logistics, and coordination. We don't have a lot of boots on the ground. We have two and a half people in the office. Uh, in times of disaster, uh, what's going to measure our, uh, uh, ability to minimize impact or maximize resiliency is how prepared individual citizens are to respond to that, to, to cope in that time of disaster. So any time that we can improve the preparedness level of the individual citizens, the less they are asking of government services and emergency services during times of disaster, we're already going to be overtaxed. Uh, and the, the most efficient and best vehicle that emergency management has for improving the preparedness of the citizens is through public education and awareness. And so a, a significant part of, of my office's mission, uh, this year and in subsequent years, is going to be educating and making the public aware of what they can do to help themselves, so that they're not looking to us to help them, uh, com- completely during times of disaster. So, yes, this is a, this covers that $30,000. To directly answer your question, the $50,000 in total for this public education campaign is for a 30-second cable TV ad, local TV ad, 60-second radio spot, billboard space, website, social media, uh, local business advertising for a three-month period.
Any further comments?
I, I don't know. I've got a real problem spending $50,000 to tell somebody to get a flu shot when they know, good and well, they should go get one. But, um, maybe I'm out in left field someplace.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I guess just to respond to that, I think it's more than just telling them to get a flu shot. It's, it's all of the disaster preparedness of, of a variety of disasters that could take place.
Correct. It's the umbrella of emergency preparedness.
And, and, uh, and, you know, and I think, uh, having people prepared so that we're not behind the eight ball when a tornado hits, or, or a flood, or, uh, whatever it might be, is, is, um, really what that office should be doing.
That's our intention.
Do you have a broken-down piece there about, you know, what each one of these advertising things are going to cost you?
Certainly.
I mean, how many radio spots are we going to put out? How many billboards are we going to put up? And, uh, as bad as we're hating billboards around here, I wonder if we shouldn't advertise somewhere else?
I guess, uh, which one do you want, what, what exactly, do you just want me to read off the whole campaign?
I just, I just kind of get to get an idea about how many radio spots you're going to do, you know, what-
Uh, for the three-month period that this, this campaign is going to cover, uh, cable TV, we're looking at, um, uh, 430-second spots over the three months. Local TV, um, we're looking at probably... That one gets a little trickier because of the way they, when they play those spots, but we're guaranteed at least 182, uh, over the specific prime time period that we're looking at. Uh, and then there's probably several hundred more in non-prime time, uh, but they don't give us a specific number on that. Um, same kind of thing with the local KOT radio, but we're looking at, uh, 351, um, uh, oh, this is local TV, too, so it's that same thing. Uh, radio, 600, over 700 radio spots. Uh, billboards, uh, this is through May and June at the Gap, uh, Mount Rushmore Road near Dairy Queen, Eddie's Truck Sales, uh, and then July and August at La Crosse Campbell in Omaha, so a total of six billboards over that three-month period. Uh, and then again, the, the website, social media, and, and some of the other things that we're doing.
Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Move to item 17. Items from the construction project manager.
Good morning. Mike Cool, Construction Project Manager. Uh, the first two items that are, uh, listed under, uh, my agenda item are, uh, kind of housekeeping items related to the Block 99, uh, property, uh, where our campus expansion project will be taking place. Uh, the first item is designation of parcel as a de- developmental lot. Uh, this is an agreement that, since the, the, uh, property, the Block 99 is, uh, made up of, of a number of different plot, platted properties, uh, it basically brings them all together so that we can apply our planned commu-, uh, commercial development, uh, requirements to that.
And you have a suggested motion here?
Mr. Chair, I would make that motion to authorize the chairperson's signature to the permanent sanitary sewer easement document prepared by the city attorney's office. I presume that's the one you wanted, wasn't it?
The, the, the one above that would be the-
This was the first one in my file, so... Oh, okay. To authorize the chairperson's signature to the designation of parcel as the developmental lot agreement prepared by the city attorney's office.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Then, Mr. Chair, I'd make my second motion, what I read a minute ago.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
That's a motion to authorize the signature of permanent sanitary sewer easement document. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the other two items are items that support, uh, uh, the construction project over on Block 99. Uh, the first item is builder's risk insurance. Uh, there's a proposal included within your packets, uh, provide the, uh, builder's risk insurance, uh, through the course of that project, uh, and that has an annual premium of $46,739. Uh, as part, as parts of this project, um, are completed, like the evidence building, uh, portions of that money will be refunded back to the county, um, based on when that project is completed. So, uh, there will be some kind of a refund associated with that, with the completion of the evidence building.
Any further discussion on this item?
Yes, we had done.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll yield to you.
Mike, uh, just for clarification, the, the cost for this premium will be coming out of the construction budget-
Correct.
For this project.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, my, my question is, is that, I'm a little confused about it. It says, uh, it will have a term of 28 months, and the annual premium for this policy would be $46,739. So is that, it says annual premium.
Yes.
So is that for two years? So we're talking about, uh, $92,000?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The, 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 per year will be $46,739, and then, uh, for the other, the remaining months, uh, that amount will be prorated out, um, for those remaining months.
So for the first 12 months of a 28-month contract, we're going to spend $46,739, and for the next 12 months, we're going to spend another $46,739, plus the balance of the remaining months?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're looking at close to $100,000.
Correct.
All right.
But just as a clarification, some of this, as they complete the evidence building, then this premium's going to go down some.
That, that's correct. This is for the full value of all the construction work that we're doing over there. As we complete the part of the evidence building, that portion of it will come off of that amount. But, uh, in order to make sure that we're covered on everything, uh, we're ensuring for the full premium amount for everything.
Any further discussion? Chair, entertain the motion.
I'll move to authorize the chair's signature to the Harleysville Insurance Company proposal recommended by Perry Barella for Swenson Insurance for the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On the back of that, or on the bottom in the back, is this another item?
Yes. Uh, the final item is a proposal from American Technical Services, uh, to provide, uh, material testing and inspection, uh, in accordance with the contract. This will be things such as the soils testing, and the majority of it is soils testing in regard to the engineered fill that be going in underneath the buildings, uh, over on Block 99. Um, this is a requirement of, of our contract with, uh, uh, the contractor, uh, that we provide this testing, uh, to make sure that they're in compliance, uh, with requirements of the contract documents. Uh, ATS, uh, provided all our preliminary work and did recommendations in regard to, uh, the foundation design, so it's in the county's best interest to you, continue to utilize them, uh, for the, uh, uh, inspection work.
Any questions or comments? Any questions on this item?
And that amount was, uh, $74,389. Now, that, that's a, that is an estimated amount. It likely will probably end up being less than that amount, but it's based on per test that they do.
Any questions or comments? Chair, entertain the motion.
I'd, uh, make a motion to authorize the chairperson's signature to the American Testing Service proposal dated February 14th, 2012, for material testing and inspection services related to the Pennington County Campus Expansion Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any more discussion or comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Items from the equalization.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Is the applicant here? I don't think they are. Are they? Are they way back there?
Yeah, and I, I don't really have anything. You have a continuation of abatement from a property owner.
As given to us here by our legal representative, apparently they don't think that, uh, there's any way that the county can do anything about this. Is that correct, Jay?
That's correct.
Okay.
The only, the only exception, and it was discussed briefly two weeks ago, is the military exception. If you're on temporary, uh, duty assignment and you miss the deadline to apply for your owner-occupied status, then there's an exception for that. But, uh, under the facts and circumstances presented here, I can't find any legal basis for the commission to, uh, grant the relief that's sought.
My motion would be to deny this application for abatement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to deny the application for abatement. Any further discussion? Any one wishing to comment on this motion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next item is from the fire administrator.
Good morning, Denny Garten County Fire Administrator. Uh, first item on the agenda is, under South Dakota state law, it allows the county commissioners to pass a resolution to prohibit fireworks if the fire danger is within a certain range, and that's all spelled out, uh, in South Dakota law. So the first resolution, and I'm not going to read the entire thing unless somebody wants it read, simply allows the commissioners to pass that resolution now, and then if the fire danger reaches those specific, uh, that criteria, then, uh, fireworks would be automatically prohibited during that time. If it falls below that criteria, then, uh, the resolution is basically off. So it could go on and could come off. So, is that correct, sir?
That's a very good accurate summary. I would like to add just, um, a little background information. Initially, you know, the two subjects came up simultaneously, open burning and regulation of fireworks. And one would logically think that the two would maybe be combined in, in a, a chapter of the code, but they're really not. They're treated separately. Open burning is essentially one statement authorizing the county commission to regulate, prohibit, or restrict open burning. There's literally no other guidelines given to you, so, uh, if you want to create a legislative act such as an ordinance and regulate open burning, you have to create the entire thing. You have to come up with definitions, you have to come up with the penalty within the guidelines, uh, authorizes, authorizing the commission to, uh, do up to a class-two misdemeanor and a penalty. Um, there's a lot of, uh, it's, it's wide open for the commission to regulate open burning. So we have drafted, uh, an ordinance for that purpose. In the meantime, of course, an ordinance has to go through two readings, and so you can't adopt it immediately, but you can adopt a resolution, uh, which we're going to present to you today, that can take effect immediately, but it doesn't have a penalty attached to it because- take effect immediately, but it doesn't have a penalty attached to it because you're not allowed, in that regard, uh, through a resolution to do a penalty. That's open burning. And when we get to that subject matter, please ask me any questions you have, and I can further explain that in detail. Fireworks is a completely different chapter of the code, and the legislature has really taken care of all the work for you, except for one thing. They've set out all the definitions, they've set out all the exceptions, they've set out when you can, uh, fire off fireworks. The only thing they left for the county commission there is to simply say, we're not gonna allow it when the fire index hits extreme, and then you can allow fireworks again for a very specific period of time when it falls below that extreme level, the very high level. And they tell you to do that via resolution. Typically resolutions, you don't have the authority to impose a penalty, but you don't need to worry about that in this case because the legislature set one up for you. Interestingly enough, in fireworks, they set it up as a class-one misdemeanor. Under open burning, the highest you can go is a class-two misdemeanor. So, it, uh, unfortunately, it's confusing, but we've tried to clear it up as, as best as we can. So, with that, I guess the first item is the resolution regarding fireworks. Is that right? That's what everybody has.
Correct.
So, like, Denny, explain that, there's, um, all this does is the commission saying that they have, uh, agreed there's a need, given our climatic conditions, uh, following state law. There's two areas that are being regulated here. One is fireworks as we understand them, and, uh, you can't fire them off during that timeframe in June and, uh, in December, June to July, December to January. The other paragraph in there regulates, interestingly enough, in the fireworks section of the law, there's a reference to, the county commission can also regulate pyrotechnics and explosives used by the agricultural community to scare off, uh, birds from sunflower fields. There's a very specific statute authorizing that. That statute is an exception to the fireworks statute unless the county commission takes action like this to prohibit it. It doesn't say, uh, when you can prohibit it, just leaves that wide open. So, the obvious, I guess, would be is we, we tried to tie it into the same conditions where you shouldn't be, uh, firing off fireworks. When the fire index is, is high like that, um, that's when you say no, and when it drops below that, I guess that's when you open it back up. So, that's how we tried to, uh, draft the resolution so that it takes into account all those things equally, fairly, uh, in the same sort of climatic circumstances.
One, one of the things that, um, I think needs to be discussed during this particular issue is that I've had a number of calls from folks in the valley who have experienced, more than once, lots of fireworks late at night, um, debris all over the place, that sort of thing. And I didn't, I haven't heard you say anything that suggests this would address that. And, and the bottom line in just about every comment is, we call law enforcement and they say that they can't do anything about it.
I, I have two comments on that. One, if you fire off fireworks at any time outside the dates that are, that is specifically allowed by state statute, which is June twentieth through July second and December twenty-eighth through January first, it's a violation of state law if you violate that provision. County has nothing to do with that. The only thing this would be that the county is doing to, well, let me, before I go on, let me just say this. So, you fire off fireworks, uh, this afternoon, that's a violation of state law, it's a class-one misdemeanor, and law enforcement can cite you for it, if they catch you, if they find you, and so forth. What this resolution, where the county has the authority to take some action today in this scope of things, is that during that timeframe when you can legally fire off fireworks, you're gonna say today, if you pass this, that even on that legal timeframe, you can't do it if the fire index reaches the extreme level. That's where the county commission comes in. The rest of the year, it's all, it's just a violation of state statute if somebody fires off a firecracker this afternoon, that's, breaks the law.
So, there's virtually nothing in law that says, uh, you gotta quit shooting after ten o'clock, uh, you gotta clean up after yourself, uh, that sort of thing.
There's, there's no hours of the day during that timeframe you can shoot, just you can shoot them off. Obviously, I suppose you can be cited for littering if you're laying your, leaving your stuff around, and, um, if they catch you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And there's nothing that, the, the county can't, can't pass an ordinance that would restrict fireworks all the time, so they could, can't shoot them off here. The state statute doesn't give us that authority.
No, state statute says this is when you can do it, so the legislature spoke.
Would you, uh, I, I guess, I guess I, I think we ought to, uh, just because we do have quite a problem with, with, uh, the Black Hills Fire Protection Zone, you can't shoot them off in, Rapid City you can't shoot them off in, just about a lot of the other communities you can't shoot them off in. So, everybody goes out, uh, into the, uh, unincorporated areas and shoots off fireworks. And Rapid Valley is like a war zone out there during the Fourth of July, so I, I would like to see Pennington County at least, uh, try to, uh, draft some proposed legislation that we could take to the legislature next year that would give us the authority, if we want, as a county, to prohibit fireworks in, in the county, the same authority that they give the cities.
There's been some interesting, um, comments in the folks I've visited with, uh, suggestions like, uh, you know, having a designated area and, uh, charge people to go in there and have their fun. Cities had a piece of ground down here that they've been trying to sell for years, it's fairly open, I, I don't know how that applies, but, uh, maybe creative minds can, um, just step out and, and provide a, a diversion or, or another, uh, way for people to have that experience without passing a law. You know, just, just be creative.
Mr. Chair. I, I agree with, with Commissioner Holloway that we should, uh, try to get something through the legislature. I know quite a few years ago, I was very inventive and tried to ban fireworks in the county, and, and a judge told me that, uh, better luck next time. And I went to the legislature, and I'll tell you, uh, if you wanna run into somebody that's got a better lobby than the liquor industry, try the fireworks.
So, they postponed you to the forty-first day?
Yep.
Okay, so, we have a draft resolution, and, um, unless we miss something, I think we understand, uh, the limitations of it and what it provides.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to ask Jay just one question, I'm gonna kinda put him on the spot, but I just want a clarification. It takes an explosive charge to set off a round of ammunition out of a firearm. It says up here, the use of explosives, pyrotechnics and fireworks. Are we, any chance limited in the use of firearms, uh, with that explosive statement?
Uh, you know, I'm not sure how the legislature, uh, defines explosives and pyrotechnics. I looked at fireworks, um, and I don't know if, if Denny has some information on that, and we could probably try to come back to you with a more, I just used the terms right out of the statute, but I don't know where, uh, what their definition is.
I'm not gonna go any further than that, I just wanted to bring it up, just in case somebody down, out there wants to raise a little fuss about something.
You, you know, you would hope, obviously, you would hope people would just use common sense in most of this, but.
Plus, I would think that if, if in fact, our, or our resolution would prohibit firearms, then the state statute would do the same thing, and I don't think that is true, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I also have a, a question. I know that you've been saying this is, uh, according to state law, but July second seems strange to me, because really it's July fourth that people will be shooting things off, and we're not taking that into account, so that is the state law.
I think the purpose behind that was that they were trying to find a time period prior to July fourth where the commissioners, uh, if the fire danger is extreme, they could say, nope, you know, fire danger is too high, we're gonna stop it two or three days prior to the Fourth of July, so.
Still let them shoot it on the fourth, even though the fire danger is high?
No, they can't, they, the, the time period, under state law, the only time period you can discharge fireworks is, uh, June twenty-fifth through July fifth.
But we're only restricting here June twentieth through the July second.
That's the time period, the twentieth of June to July, it's a time period in which, we look at the fire danger, and if the fire danger reaches extreme, then they're prohibited. So, there's kinda two dates there. There's, there's a, a date of, uh, June twenty, I believe it's June twenty-fifth to July fifth that you can discharge, you can shoot them, okay? But about five days prior to that, twentieth of June to July second, then the commissioners can look at the fire danger and say, nope, it's too high, or, or not enough, or, and we'll, we'll either prohibit them or not prohibit them.
And you can prohibit them through the fifth of July?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that didn't make sense here.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda confusing, and I'm not a percent sure why the legislature,
Mr. Chair.
Did it that way.
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution prohibiting use of explosive pyrotechnics and fireworks in Pennington County during certain climate conditions as presented.
Your second.
Second.
Motion is second on the resolution regulating fireworks. Any further discussion? Excuse me, someone?
Don't think so.
I can't see wanting to comment, or? Were you pointing it?
Oh, I thought.
Well, I'm a retailer, and, uh, but first, we're members of the community, and so I would approve the adoption of the proposal. But I can tell you how some of the communities, we run multiple locations in several states, and, uh, one of the things, for instance, in the state of Colorado, we, we try to put fireworks stands in the cities where there's fire suppression, water hoses, and, and, uh, it's hard to catch concrete and asphalt on fire. State of Nebraska, you have to have your stands in the cities, you cannot have them outside of the city limits. And that's really the solution that the state of South Dakota should take. I think they ought to be inside of Rapid City, and we stop, stop making people criminals for celebrating the Fourth of July. One of the things that was mentioned, Lyndell, about the refuse, in the city of Whitewood, what we do there is we have a, a designated area, and they're allowed to shoot the, the product on the evening of the third and the fourth, and it confines it to an area that can then be picked up. We donate money to the Boy Scout troops up there to do that service for us. We've built the spa, uh, we built their, uh, skateboard park for them up there with donations. I'm gonna talk to Wall because we need to fund their ambulance service with fireworks. And that's what we do. We provide that service in multiple states, and it's a, it's a great business, it's a great way to celebrate the Fourth of July, if done responsibly by responsible companies.
Before you leave the podium, please state your name so we have it on record and can refer people to you.
My name's Dale Voightston, a lot of the refuse in the area is my fault, uh, and I represent Holiday Enterprises. Anyway, I would, I think it's a good thing to ban them in, in the extreme.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have motion and a second, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open burning.
Hand something out to each of you real quick, and I'll explain why you're getting an update here.
Well, these are slightly.
This is the resolution and the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Burning.
Okay.
And, uh, it has one, one change to it literally in the last couple hours, and I'll explain why that is.
So, we're, we're right on, on track. Thank you.
Permitted fire pits, I didn't see that.
Again, this deals with the, um, open burning, and, uh, the commission does have independent authority to adopt both a resolution and an ordinance occupying this, this field of regulation, and so, uh, Denny and I worked on this and put together a resolution that you could adopt today that takes effect immediately upon the adoption. And then after the second reading of the ordinance, which would be two weeks from now, it will take effect and would rescind the resolution, and then you'd have just an ordinance in place. The reason why you got a, a handout just now is because when we, uh, did the second-to-last revision, we forgot to add anything in there allowing an exception for branding. And, uh, we've put our heads together and come up with a little quick, uh, definition, um, that you can all look at. So, uh, generally, I'm gonna talk about both real quick, but I know you'll need to take independent action on the resolution and then the ordinance. But what these do is, is, uh, it defines what open fires are, and it defines what exceptions to open fires are. And we're trying to accept out so that if you're having a barbecue grill, you're using your, uh, charcoal grill, gas grill, if you're branding, uh, if you have one of those fire pits on your patio and it's got proper enclosure and protection to it, we don't wanna prohibit you from doing that. We want you to enjoy your summer within reason, uh, and we use the same, um, condition of when it's, when it's, uh, against the law to do it, as the fireworks, and that is that extreme index danger and, and so forth, 'cause that's what the National Weather Service uses, and the fire departments, I think, uh, have access to that information. So, um, what you have before you is both the resolution and the ordinance. The resolution, obviously, is much shorter and quick, and it'll only be into effect a couple weeks, supposedly, and then the ordinance would take over, so, um, just point out one of the other things, I guess, the resolution you just passed on fireworks, again, by state law, that's a class-one misdemeanor, which means, uh, to the court, that means that it's a, a two-thousand-dollar fine, or a year in jail, or both. Now, courts don't always impose a full two-thousand-dollar fine, they don't always impose a full year in jail, and they don't always impose both. In the resolution and the ordinance before you right now involving open burning, the law limits your authority to a class-two misdemeanor. That's up to thirty days in jail and a five-hundred-dollar fine, or both. And right now, the way the, um, ordinance is, is written is that it's a, a, a five-hundred-dollar fine, but you're obviously free to change that before, between now and the second reading, you can make it fifty bucks, two hundred dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever you want. I just put the maximum in there so you could see what it is and go from there. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions on the burning resolution? Any further comments?
Mr. Chair, I do.
Yes.
Jay, on section one, definition of open fire, you, you, when you put, you put branding iron in there, and we're not prohibiting branding iron, we're prohibiting branding fires, so we wanna eliminate prohibiting branding fires, so should it not be some kind of a heating unit rather than just the irons itself, or?
Look down, though, on, it would be section one, letter F, is the definition of branding iron.
Yeah, well, we just received this, so we didn't tell. Hot iron used.
I, I see what Ken is saying, though. Branding iron sorta gives the idea, it's the, the iron, not the, the source of the heat. And so, it, it seems like it would make a little more sense to have it be a source of the heat, because the charcoal grill is a source of heat. the heat, because the charcoal grill is a source of heat, the outdoor fireplace is the source of the fire, maybe, I don't know, I, maybe I should defer to Lindell, but, but it does seem like, you know, they just don't use open fire branding anymore, but.
Real cowboys do.
You do that. They're only branding two or three at a time, aren't they? But it just, I don't know, branding irons makes it sound like it's the iron, not the source of the.
We can certainly make that.
Either a branding stove or a branding furnace, whichever.
Want me to change it to furnace?
Come on, real cowboys don't say branding, branding furnaces.
Sure they do. That's the name of it.
How about, how about branding fire pit?
We've never seen that in a John Wayne movie. Branding furnace.
By the way, we're burning daylight. There, there's getting to be fewer and fewer people that know how to chop wood.
I'm not kidding.
Well, I know a guy left three fingers in his glove the other day, just, just splitting it.
Okay, we're kind of, kind of branching out with our discussion, straddling both the resolution and the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution regulating open burning in Pennington County.
Second.
Motion is second on the burning resolution. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, we'll talk about the ordinance further. Do we, do we need to make motions relative to amendments at the first reading, or?
You, you could approve the first reading with whatever change you would direct me and Denny to make.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I still think in that section one, item A, and the branding irons, there should be some others description there rather than branding irons.
So I, I kind of inserted on mine branding furnace, if that's what you would prefer.
How about branding iron source? Because it might not be a furnace.
Branding iron heat source.
Yeah.
Good F's.
That covers it all.
We might have some folks in the audience that have a recommendation, or some of them left.
Should have scheduled this with the ambulance.
Mr. Tiltram, what do you think?
Branding iron stove is not good, man.
All in favor of stove?
That eliminates you from going out on the, on the parade, Mr. Chair, and, and firing up a little, that to heat your branding iron.
Running, running irons have been illegal for years, so.
Running irons? Yeah, that's right next to your neighbor's fence, or that would.
Mr. Chair, if you look at how he worded it in the resolution, this might work, because you wrote, "A contained fire used to heat irons for branding purposes." That's a really good way to do it. I do scare of, of those old John Wayne guys, and the modern Waynes.
Can you create an acronym out of all those words?
But I mean, it does, that is a good way to say it.
Are, are you suggesting that the way I said it, the resolution should be put on section one A?
Yeah, something like that, because that, I know that makes it really long, but something similar to that, because it actually says.
Come on, bud.
That's a little more clearly.
Could, could change it to branding heat source.
That's what I like.
Yeah, something like that.
We'll, we'll figure out something really wise and present it to you in two weeks.
Be sure that wise time gets in the minutes, would you?
Any other issues in the proposed ordinance? Penning County Ordinance Number 632, first reading, chair will accept the motion.
So move as per amended.
I'll second that, partner.
You got pointed to choose on today?
No. We're burning daylight, so.
That's illegal. That's right.
Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, items from the Highway Department?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't think there's anybody here going to complain about any of this, so they'd make a motion to allow the award recommendation as presented by the fire, or by the fire, by the Highway Superintendent for a new pneumatic tire roller.
We have a gentleman here representing the Highway Department that should be allowed to speak. Would you please?
Good morning, Mark Schock, representing.
Is there a second?
Okay, now, let him talk all he wants.
How are you going to talk about?
Good morning, Mark Schock, representing Highway Department. Highway is at the NACE conference for this week.
And the motion is, that we have, is related to the pneumatic tire roller? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Motion maker? Anything you wish to say further?
Uh, no, just we'd make a motion to award the pneumatic tire roller to Diesel Machinery Incorporated. They're the, they met the, all the specifications that were written on this, for this roller.
Do you have this motion over there? And so we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion further? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the new tractor.
The, the next item is a motion to award bids, to grant a bid award for a new tractor and twin-deck mower. We would recommend that there be a motion passed to award this mower bid to John Deere, or actually, the, the company is RDO, with a John Deere tractor and diamond mowers. They were low bid $99,102.50.
Any questions, comments? Motion?
That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to award the bid on the new tractor and twin-deck mowers? Any further discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items from Weeden Pass.
Morning, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Weeden Pass Director. Talked about this, oh, about a month ago. We've been putting together a regional Black Hills mountain pine beetle strategy plan, basically a five-year plan on trying to get a handle on the current epidemic. I would better coordinate our local, state, federal, and industry actions. It's, we're already coordinating our efforts, but this just kind of formalizes it, gives us some outlined goals and, and some objectives to, to reach. The other count, this resolution's going in front of the other Black Hills counties, both South Dakota and Wyoming. Guess just here to request a motion to accept this resolution and Chair's person, Chairperson's signature on the final draft document. There may be some minor changes for the state to sign off on it, just some few wording issues. It doesn't obligate the county in any funds or anything like that, I was just saying, we're willing to coordinate a regional strategy with the other agencies and entities involved.
Would you propose to bring that back if there was changes?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution and authorize Chairperson's signature on the final draft of the Black Hills Regional Mountain Pine Beetle Strategy Plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kill them in a second. Any discussion? Any, any comments from the audience? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
We're still good morning. In regards to items 22 A and B from SDSU extension, we received a response from Carla Troutman at four o'clock yesterday afternoon. In light of that late submission, I don't feel you guys have had sufficient time to look at anything. We do have additional information that I would like to give to you, so I would like to request a motion to continue this until April 17th. At such time, I can give you some additional information from them and possibly request their attendance by phone or in person at our next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we do continue it to the April 17th meeting, and that we do request that, I would actually like to have both Carla Troutman and Mr., Dr. Berry, present by phone or in person to visit directly with us, because our back and forth in the letter doesn't seem to be getting us anywhere.
Chair, second to that motion.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. You want to talk about item B, or not?
Certainly. Well, no, item A and B would be together for that.
Okay, so both item A and B are in the motion. Okay, thank you. Next item is the Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month proclamation. Do you want to discuss that?
I, just to let the board know that one of our former planning commission members, Mr. Fred Weisfeld, I hope I pronounced that right, brought this to the office and asked that the commissioners publicly support April being Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month, and you have the proclamation in front of you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to allow the chair's signature on the proclamation, the Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the appointment of Penning County Housing and Redevelopment Commissioner.
You have a very patient back there.
Senator, I was only an hour and a half late when I told you quarter to ten.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm JP Denifin, delighted to be chairman of the Board of Penning County Housing. I'm here today with Doug Wells, our executive director, for your appointment of a new commissioner. Thank you. Stand by for any questions or anything we can do.
Okay.
Are either of them here?
What's that?
Are either of the folks here?
See, we have. Yes.
I'd make a motion to put, to appoint Fred Eisenbrow to the Penning County Housing and Redevelopment Commission Board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that I don't know if anybody has the answer for. Is that going to be a conflict of interest with Mr. Eisenbrow being the property manager
Lakota Homes administers programs similar to what we do, but we're not, and we don't administer to the same programs. We have no real interaction with them, so I don't see any, any conflict at all.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just a clarification, I guess. Are, are we replacing somebody? Did somebody's term expire, or?
Yes.
Is that what it was?
Yep.
And that person didn't want, didn't reapply, or?
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, Commissioner, yes. Ms. Poyer decided that she had a very busy schedule. She, we're, we're very sad to lose her on the commission, but she just didn't feel, as I understand it, she could provide the time necessary. That's why there's an opening, and she did not reapply.
All right, thank you.
We did ask her.
Thank you. In addition to Mr. Eisenbrow, we have a letter here from Sharon Scudder, and is Sharon here, or anyone representing her?
Nope.
If not, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, we have a property tax formula presentation.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, could we take a break before we get into this?
No.
No?
Yes, yes, we can.
Thank you.
Was that a motion? I second it.
Under the county's budget. The definitions. Assessed value. Property in South Dakota is assessed at full market value. The assessed value is the number that you see on your assessment notice. Taxable value is the number that you see on your tax bill, and it is the value that the levy is multiplied against. The levy is not multiplied against your assessment, it's taxable value, and we get taxable value from a factor. Assessed value times a factor equal taxable value. That factor is the multiplier that converts assessed value to taxable value, and we get that from the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue tells us what our factor is. They tell us what our taxable percentage will be. Levy, that's your tax rate. Further in here, I'll explain that levy is just a result of a budget request and your available assessment. We know what our taxable value is. You determine what you want for a budget, the levy is the result, and it's typically expressed as dollars of tax per thousand dollars of value.
So what's, what is the multiplier for the taxable factor?
This year, it's 88.5, and, and we'll, we'll get into that. It changes every year. This year, we just found out, a week ago, 88.5.
For the public's knowledge, who makes that factor?
Department of Revenue.
State of South Dakota?
Yes.
And that's based upon your assessment versus the county's assessment around here?
Nope.
Do you help equalize that?
It, it's based on our level of assessment. The, the Department of Revenue wants a factor that will put everybody at 85% of market value. Well, if we're 100% of market value, our factor's going to be 85%. If we are at 92%, 96%, our factor's 88.5, and I'll, I'll show, show how that's calculated. Budget, that's our property tax budget, not your entire budget, just property tax. It's the amount of tax that the government is looking from the value that we have in the county. Same thing applies to school districts, city, ambulance districts, all of those. South Dakota law 10633 requires that all property be assessed at its true and full value, is what the statute says. And then there's another statute that defines what true and full value is, and it's almost identical to what is commonly defined as full market value. So assessed value, full market value. What you could sell your property for, it's what you find on your assessment notice. Now, 10137 states that property taxes shall be levied on valuations where the median level of assessment represents 85% of market value, as determined by Department of Revenue. So the levy is multiplied against what the Department of Revenue determines is 85% of market value. Now, might be a good time to explain why we're doing 85%. The state of South Dakota supplements the budgets for the school districts. I don't know if there's a school district in South Dakota that entirely funds itself through its local effort, its local property taxes. that entirely funds itself through its local effort, its local property taxes, but most of them don't. Most of them develop their budget, they get part of that budget from property taxes. The state of South Dakota gives them the difference. Okay, so if we're going to give every school district that, that difference that they collect locally compared to what they need, we're going to make sure that they're all, they're all taxing their local effort equally. We don't want one county to assess their property at ninety-eight percent of market value and another county to, to assess their property at eighty percent of market value and then they would get a bigger share of state supplement. So we're going to all, we're going to put everybody at eighty-five percent. Of course, the market in one county to the next is different. Okay, your value is different. You have more property in one county than you do in the next and the market is different. So every, every county at eighty-five percent of whatever your market is. That's why we have this whole factor thing. Here's the formula. This is the long formula, how property taxes are calculated. Assessed value times a factor and this year it's eighty-eight point five. Changes every year. Taxes paid 2013. Assessed value times the factor will equal taxable value. Times the levy equal property tax. You can, you can do this on a macro scale for the entire county's budget. That property tax will be the budget or just on a single, single property. Assessed value, hundred thousand dollar assessment times eighty-eight point five is eighty-eight thousand five hundred. Times whatever the levy is will, will give you your property tax bill. Of course, the levy is just a result of we need this much property tax and we have this much value, the levy is the result that gives us that property tax from that value. Where's that factor come from and how is it calculated? The answer to that is South Dakota Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue audits every county every year. They use a sales ratio study to do this. This is what a sales ratio analysis is. If your property is assessed at ninety thousand and it sells for a hundred thousand, that's ninety percent. Based on that one sale, that tells us that your property is assessed at ninety percent of the market. Now, in the, in the appraisal industry, one sale doesn't make a market, but we're looking at every single sale that takes place in the county and we're doing a ratio like that. And for Pennington County, that's between fifteen hundred to two thousand sales. We measure the assessed value divided by the sale price. That tells us how accurate we are. Now, we do many more statistical analysis than this. It's, it's good to know our, our level of assessment, that ninety percent, but in reality, some of them are seventy percent, some of them are a hundred twenty percent for a lot of reasons. We also measure how tight that range is. Down at the bottom, you can see five sales there. One of them was ninety-nine percent. It, it was assessed at almost what it sold for. And the lowest was ninety-three percent. We measure our level of assessment by a median. We don't use an average, we use a median. And our median level of assessment this year is ninety-six percent. We had more than five sales and they were a lot wider range than that. Some, some of the more analysis that we do is we measure how tight that range is. It's one thing to measure that median, but if your median is like this, we'd like to see that, you know, that range like this and have a median.
So does this, because it's, it's ninety-six percent, does that mean then we're over assessing those properties?
Nope, state law says we're supposed to be at a hundred percent of market value.
For the, for the assessment? I thought you said eighty-five percent.
That's, that's taxable value. Yep. Your assessed value should be a hundred percent. Of course, practical application of that is awfully difficult to have a median of a hundred percent. That, that'd be, then we'd be somewhere between ninety and a hundred and ten. Okay, at ninety-six, maybe we're between eighty-five and a hundred and three. Okay, if we could shrink that range up and be ninety-nine to a hundred and one and have a median of a hundred, that'd be beautiful, but we, we can't do that. We, we shoot, we shoot for a hundred, but we also shoot to bring that range down as narrow as we can. This year, on a median, essentially an average, we can say that on the average, property in Pennington County is assessed at ninety, ninety-six percent of market value based on the sales that took place this year. Now, that, that excludes ag. The ag property is completely out of this. Ag property has a factor of eighty-five percent, had a factor eighty-five percent last year. It'll be eighty-five next year. It's all based on a productivity formula, not a part of this. But it, it's still assessed value times a factor of eighty-five and, and that all applies, but we don't do a sales ratio study for ag. So our median level of assessment in Pennington County, ninety-six percent of market value based on the sales that took place this last year. So our level of assessment's ninety-six percent. There's a red button here somewhere. We need to be at eighty-five percent, okay? That's our goal. We are at ninety-six percent, we need to be at eighty-five percent. Point eight eight five gets us there. And this is just math. Point nine six times point eight eight five equals point eight five. The Department of Revenue audited all our sales and told us we're at ninety-six percent. We need to be at eighty-five. They do the math. We can do the math. It comes up point eight eight five. That's our taxable value this year. It changes every year because we change our assessment. Our market changes. And because it's a different set of sales every year. It's, it's another fifteen hundred sales we look at. So that number will never be the same. We can't, we couldn't do anything to keep it the same. If our market was flat, we didn't change any of our assessed values, it'd still be a little bit different just because it's another fifteen hundred sales and we're figuring a median. But every year it's different based on our, our assessed value and our, our sales that take place. Now, last year, we were at ninety-three point two percent of the market. Find the red button again. Ninety-three point two, we needed to be at eighty-five. Our factor last year was point nine one two. Our level of assessment went up, so our factor went down because we're still going to the eighty-five. So extremely simplistic. Our level of assessment went up, so the taxable percentage goes down. If your property assessment changed, not at all last year, if it's exactly the same as it was last year, your taxable value will be less this year. But we change assessments all over the county. Some go up, some go down for all kinds of reasons.
You raise mine every year.
Everybody says that. Okay? I, I know I'm not going to find anybody in the room whose assessment didn't change and I doubt that there's somebody here that would admit that his went down. Okay? But if.
My tax bill went up.
Well, but next year, it'll go down and it doubly so because the taxable percentage went down. I was talking to Dan earlier, he said, he said his went up and jokingly I said, yeah, yours went up even more than anybody else's. So even though the factor went down, you're still going to pay more. Okay, everybody's assessment changes differently. But if yours didn't change at all, the, the taxable factor's going to go down. Countywide, as a whole, non-ag properties in the county, the level of assessment went up, so taxable percentage went down. That's going to have an impact on the levy. Now remember, assessed value is on assessment notice and taxable value's on your tax bill. Okay, shorten that formula up. At the top there, taxable value, which is on your tax bill, which is eighty-eight point five percent of whatever was on your assessment notice. Taxable value times the levy equal your tax or on a larger scale, the county's budget. Each part of, each part of this formula is a variable. The levy is the result. We have six point, last year we had six point six billion dollars worth of taxable value in the county. You had a budget of thirty-four million. The levy is point oh oh five one, dollars per thousand of value. These are rounded grossly. Ignore the numbers, don't print them in the paper. They are, they're rounded to make this simple. Last year, six point six billion. We, we want thirty-four million in a budget. The levy is just the number that gives you that budget from the taxable value. This year, we have six point two eight five billion. If you want the same budget as last year, if you don't, if you don't require more budget money, the levy's going to have to go up because your taxable value went down. If you want to collect the same budget money as you did last year, the levy's got to go up because your taxable value went down. The levy is just a result. However, we added new property to the, to the tax roll this year. About four point two percent assessed value. So we added to the, to the assessment side of this, we added a little over four percent. That's really very good. There are a few counties in South Dakota that are adding four percent new property to the tax roll. That's new property that's sharing in the tax burden. Okay, so we're really at, this year, we're really at six point five billion if we add that new property in and we're certainly going to add it in. It's on the tax roll. If, if you increase the budget for the same amount of money as the, as what the new property is going to pay, your budget will go from thirty-four million to thirty-five point one. The levy stays exactly the same. Because you added, you added more property to the taxable value side. You added an equal amount, a proportional amount to the budget side. The levy doesn't change. If you don't increase the budget equal to that new growth, we still have six point five billion on the taxable side. If you go back to last year's budget and don't increase for the new growth, the, the levy is less. But it's not as low as it was up here higher because even with the new property we've added at six point five billion, you have less taxable value than you did the last year. So you're not going to get the levy down less than last year. Even with the new property, you still have less taxable value. And a large part of that is, is the change in the factor. However, you want to, you want to consider that because if we're adding four percent more property to the county's tax roll, it's logical to assume that you're going to have four percent more people out there demanding more government services. So you don't want to not add more money to your budget because you've got more property demand and services. It's logical to expect that your budget is going to be more. Down at the, the very bottom there, the other thing that happens to this formula is the CPI. State law says that you can't increase your budget except for new growth. You can increase it for new growth except for three percent or the Consumer Price Index, which this year happens to be three percent. So you can increase your budget three percent every year if that CPI is there. So six point five billion dollars in taxable value. If you increase your budget from thirty-four million to thirty-five million, because taxable value stays the same, the levy will have to go up. You want more tax money from the same taxable value, the levy has to go up. The levy, again, is just a result. The levy is just simply a math calculation. You determine what the budget is. The auditor tells you, you've got this much taxable property to take it from. The levy is just a math, math result. The variables here. Reappraisal is something that our office does. We change values up or down on every property in the county. We do it because our market changes. The market, real estate market goes up, real estate market goes down. We change the assessed value of properties because we had the wrong value last year. Dan's property, we were just playing too low. It needed to come up. And there, for all kinds of reasons. We also, we also measure our accuracy. We do, the state doesn't, but we do a sales ratio analysis per neighborhood. And we have the county split up into a hundred different neighborhoods. What, what everybody would typically consider a neighborhood, we, we look at every sale that took place in that neighborhood and we measure our level of assessment and then we compare. If we can get every single neighborhood in the county exactly at ninety-six percent, that'd be wonderful. We can't because some of those neighborhoods have a hundred and fifty sales and some of them have two. And you don't get a very reliable number with two sales. But, but we track them over time. And, and so we're, we're changing values just to make it equal from one neighborhood to the next. So our assessment is going up and down for the market and for all of the changes we make. The other variable is that factor. The state tells us what that factor is based on the sales that take place this year. And a fifteen hundred sales is a lot of sales. You can get a pretty good median from that. But it'd be a lot better if we had fifteen thousand of them. If we had fifteen thousand, our, our factor would probably be more consistent from year to year. If we had fifty sales, that factor bounces all over the place because you just don't get a very reliable number. And the other, the other variable here is growth. We add new property every year. We are in the lucky position to add four percent new property every year. Most counties are not doing that. Now, on the taxable side, you see, we've added three point five percent. That's taxable value because taxable value's less than assessed value. Three and a half percent taxable value increase for new property is a wonderful thing. It is a very good thing. This is a copy of a levy, levy page. Comes from Julie. The, the formula that I had, taxable value times levy equal budget. The levy was point oh oh five one. Grossly simplistic because there's all kinds of levies. There's a county levy, there's a city levy, there's a school district levy, there's a water district, a fire district, unorganized roads, road districts, all of those things. Library. She has to do that math in, in a spreadsheet, a massive spreadsheet. And, and this is just one page of it. There's taxing districts all over this county. I copied Rapid Cities, which is four DRC, which is right through the middle here. You can see the county's levy, four point eight four, is exactly the same. I wanted to show you that it doesn't matter money-wise for the county whether a property is ag or non-ag or owner occupied. The county's levy is the same all the way through. The only difference is, is on the school district side, that's where you see the difference in your taxes. And the school district's levy is the largest levy. Come over here, the civil district, that's Rapid City. Rapid City's levy, three point one five. Little bit less than, than the county levy. Both of them a whole lot less than the school district. But we go up here, I think three D UFNU is New Underwood. They have a ten dollar levy. Of course, their levy is, is a lot higher because they, they have a lot less property to tax and just because you have a lot less value doesn't mean you have a proportional less budget. But we have all kinds of other columns here. We have a water district. I think this is West Dakota Water District. We have a fire district, sewer district, road district, ambulance district, all of those. Julie has to do the math to come up with each of these. One massive spreadsheet to do the math. And then she checks with the state. The state has to check them to make sure that they're appropriate. There is also a state law that says that your levy can only go so high. When I talk about how the levy is just a math result, except there's a state law that says, doesn't matter, it can only be this high. And the ambulance district was talking about that earlier. Regardless of what the value is in their budget, it's capped at this amount. And I think most levies are well under that, but some of them are up there.
Shannon? The, the codes that are coming down on the left-hand side there, it says A, N A, N Z. What are, what are those codes?
Look at, all the way at the top. I, I don't know what three D UF thirteen is. It's some tax district somewhere. Well, the one right below it, because we skipped the A. If you're an ag property, the A is for ag, add up all of those numbers, four point eight four three plus seven point eight eight plus point oh two eight, all the way over. Your levy is fourteen point six oh seven. On a hundred thousand dollar ag property, it pays fourteen dollars and sixty cents per thousand of value. N A is non-ag property. That's non-ag, not owner occupied. Okay, the levy for that is twenty dollars. Skip the N Z. The O O is owner occupied. So you have a house that's owner occupied, the levy is sixteen dollars and eighteen cents in that tax district there. Uh, the NZ is NAZ property. We go back a few years ago, there was a state law that says if you had ag property that sold for 150% of its ag income value, it was assessed at sale price for seven years, four years? I, I forget. That's done away with. Uh, the, the law was repealed, we don't have NAZ property. We don't have any property that's still NAZ anymore. It just happens to be in her sheet here. So we don't have any NZ levy, because we don't have any NAZ property. But we got, uh, when it comes to levies, we have an ag levy, an owner occupied levy, and a non-ag, non-owner occupied levy. Just a brief synopsis of what happened with our assessment. Our, our total assessment dropped by about 2.8%. That is looking at total value, uh, from last year to total value this year. Dropped about 2.8%. Our market, uh, I'm not gonna say that our real estate market dropped 2.8%, because we're not that good of a measure of our real estate market. We're chasing a market, uh, and maybe we had some property that was too high. Uh, of course, we have some property that, like Dan's, that was too low. We brought it up. Uh, but, overall, the total number dropped by about 2.8%. And that's really because our market in, uh, in Pennington County here is flat to maybe very small increase. And, and that tells, uh, that our level of assessment, jumping from 93% to 96% is an indication of that. Because even though we dropped a little bit, we still, uh, jumped up there in level of assessment. So we dropped our assessed value by about 2.8%. We added 4.2% growth, and, uh, we get a factor this year of 88.5. So you should see, on your tax bill, if you have a $100,000 house, your tax bill will say 88,500, times all of those levies, and the tax bill shows you all of those levies.
When you say 4.2% growth, if I remember right, though, we cannot take all of that growth because of TIFs. So that throws everything out a while.
Yeah, I'm not getting into TIFs. That's confusing. We added 4.2% more property to the tax roll. Julie deals with those TIFs. Uh, but there's two things going on. There's some of that property that you can't, uh, you can't increase your budget for, you can't tax until that TIF is done. And a lot of the, well, not, uh, not a majority of our property is in a TIF, because a lot of our new property we're adding is homes, that's not in a TIF district. Uh, TIF districts tend to be commercial properties, but we have a lot of homes we're adding. Uh, but, we also have some TIFs that have expired that we're adding now. So there's some of that, that, uh, that we can't include, but there's some of it that we're, that we are. And that convolutes it.
In, in those TIFs, though, don't they, they, they go ahead and assess that property that's in there? It's just that we don't get the money, the county doesn't get the money, it goes to pay off whatever the loan was.
Yes. The, the property in the TIF district is still assessed at its market value. So, uh, let's say you have 40 acres, and it has a house on it of $100,000. The house and 40 acres is $100,000. They create a TIF, that $100,000 is your base value, then they build a Walmart on it. Okay, now we've got $10 million worth of property. Okay? The taxes are still, it's still assessed at 10 million, because it, it's worth 10 million. But the difference tween, in the taxes between 10 million and 100,000 goes to pay off that bond, until the term is up and the bond is paid off. But the property owners in there still get an assessment notice that has a full value on it. And they still get a tax bill, uh, for the full tax as well. That money just, uh, instead of going to the county and the school and all that, goes to pay that bond.
In, in those, and maybe Julie's the one that answers this, if, if you don't know, but, i- in those TIF areas, when they get their tax, the, the property owner gets his tax bill, does it show the county levy, or does it show the TIF levy?
I think there's, that, there is a county levy. You wouldn't know if you are in a TIF district that you are, except I think there is a note on the tax bill.
There's a note on the tax bill of what percentage of your taxes goes to the TIF. So say, for instance, out in Red Rock Meadows, when that was on there, like 99% of your taxes went to the TIF. So we noticed that, but we also by law have to show the levies. So it's kind of a screwed-up way of showing it, but we wanted to show that factor on there of the TIF, so that the people actually knew they were in a TIF district. We're not required to show that. So we couldn't show it in a levy form, we had to show it in a percentage form.
So if you're in that TIF district, you wouldn't know you're in it, except for the, the note she's putting on there, because the taxable value, the levy looks, i- i- is the full levy and the full value. The, the money is just directed a different direction after you pay it.
So Julie, do, do we know how many parcels of property are in TIFs in Pennington County?
We do know. We know what those values of each of those TIF districts are at different times during the levying process. I never see the number of parcels, but, but those have to be tracked. And, um, what part of our problem is with TIFs is they're layered on top, so when the first one goes away, there's already a second one under, and there's there to pay off, so it can be more, more than the maximum number of years before those are paid off. But, the number of parcels would have to come from DOE, and I don't know that we just have it at hand, or if we'd have to count them, or...
I think it would shock the public if they knew how many parcels of, were in TIFs that, that, um, the county wasn't getting their portion of the tax.
Yeah.
And, and frankly, the schools don't get it either, do they?
Yes.
Or they do get their money?
They get it re-leveed.
They get it re-leveed, but they don't get it off of that piece of property.
No, they get it off of everybody.
The, the money that goes to, to pay, pay back that bond, that TIF money, goes back to pay the developer's cost of improving that TIF district. So, that much money that would ordinarily go into all of those different property tax budgets, the school, the city, the county, the ambulance district, whatever, that money that, that doesn't go to them is made up by everybody else, for that time period.
And we talk about improving the property, but in the last TIF that the city passed, it was actually by the property for the developer.
I, I also have a question. I, I'm curious about how many of those TIFs are used over and over again, kinda like by the same developers? Because that is a concern to me. If anything ever happens to a developer who has many TIFs, if they financially go under, what happens to the TIF? Does the county? I mean, it's, are, is there any responsibility? How does that happen?
There is no responsibility, even on the county TIFs, if those were to go under. Um, the developer takes that responsibility over. I don't know how they work 'em at the city. But, at no time is the county responsible for any of that debt, ours or theirs. We've, we've had three TIFs.
Well, if, if the debt is spread to ge, spread across all the other, or if the difference is spread across all the other taxpayers...
For the school re-levee.
Then, um, we, we sorta are responsible, I mean...
I meant as the county government, I thought that was the question.
Well, yeah, and I might be mixing it up, but...
But no, we're all paying the school portion of the, of TIFs, again.
So, kinda like being assessed twice, in essence, for the school?
Yeah.
Because we have to, by state law, make up what doesn't go to the school district?
Yes. It affects our budgeting. I think I figured it was over $2 million that the TIFs, um, collect, it could be county dollars. That would help us a lot in a budget year.
You know, in theory, I can see where cities who don't wanna spend their, uh, tax money for infrastructure, a TIF would be good. I just don't understand why they get, uh, our, you know, the county's share of that, and why they get the school's share. They oughta just, it oughta be just on their levy. And, and, obviously, that's the state law, but, uh...
There was a bill before the legislature, uh, a year before last, to change exactly that, and it failed.
They got the same lobbyist as the electric industry, I suppose.
And the city, city picks up all of the money on that for the building products and the si, and the sale tax and things that's paid on the products to build property or build buildings on that property that's in the TIF.
There obviously is a difference of opinion on TIFs between which government you're from.
Yeah, that's true. But I would really hate to see, I mean, if you, they didn't set it up that way, essentially what would happen is those school districts, if they didn't reassess, the school districts would lose that income like we do, and that wouldn't work either. I mean, you know, it's...
Oh yeah, the state wants as much local effort put into those school districts as possible, so that they have to put in less state aid.
What would happen is if the school district lost that money, the state would have to then pay more in state aid. The state doesn't wanna do that, so it's more local effort that makes it up.
But in, in case of this discussion, they is us.
Lindell, it seems like when the legislators go to Pier, they forget that they're they. They, they forget that they're, that they's back home. They become them down in Pier.
Kind of a case of misplaced identity or something.
When it, when it comes to any part of this, uh, there is no money that is coming from somewhere else. If, uh, if one person pays less tax, and you guys collect the same amount of budget, everybody else makes it up. Uh, now, we know that, uh, Dan's house assessment went up, a lot. So he's gonna pay more, okay, then the rest of us are gonna pay less. Reality is, is it's so small, we'll never notice it, except Dan. But it's always...
Dan, that'll teach you to make him get a building permit to build his next house.
It's always somebody else that makes it up. It, the rest of us all make it up.
Thank you very much.
Shannon?
Okay.
2013 budget, in regards to item A, it's come to my attention that a solution has been reached for A, so no discussion is needed, and we just need to move on to hear from the Healthcare Trust Board. Thank you.
Nick, who's talking on here?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here as a representative of the Healthcare Trust Board. We met last Friday morning, and we wanted to bring a few items to the commission's attention. We do have a meeting with our third-party administrator, uh, first administrator's on April 10th, to discuss our renewals for the, for our plan year, which is July 1st through June 30th. We need to discuss some of the conditions of our plans and what we're gonna do to move forward. Currently, we have a lot of issues that we discussed as a board and what we're gonna do, um, including, and I put some of those down, those are just what was tossed around, the possibility of increasing premiums, possibly increasing deductibles, changing some of the ways we charge for prescription drugs, and then encouraging some wellness plans to make our employees healthier. So those are some things that we're thinking about making changes in our plan. But what we'd like to request from the commission is to wait till after we have this meeting on the 10th, to determine if there's any, uh, premium increase for budgeting purposes. We feel that we don't want to have the department heads go through the process of doing their budget, and then us coming back and saying that we need to increase premiums. So, what our thought was, is after that, we could let the department heads know what our recommendations are for budget year 2013, and then they could go ahead and start their budgeting process based on those, those numbers. We'll take any questions.
Are you factoring in the situation that the Supreme Court may rule us out of the healthcare business and, and wind up costing more money or less money? We don't, we don't know that.
You know, and we, we did discuss that, it came up, and with this going through the Supreme Court right now, we just don't know. We're trying to get the best advice we can, and that's why we have a third-party administrator. But frankly, they don't know either, until the Supreme Court...
If they left town in the dark of night, then...
So we're gonna go forward with the best information we have, and I think that's all we can do. But yes, we did discuss that.
Any further discussion on this item? What do you need, Ali?
And, and obviously, if we, if, if that figure is too high, and we wanna change, we can do it later on, but at least it would give them a figure to work with for the first go-round of budgeting. And that would be my motion.
Would the addition of the word preliminary be appropriate or not?
Sure. I would agree with that.
Okay, do we have motion? In a second, then.
Did you read that? Read that back, please.
Just that whatever recommendation the Healthcare Trust Board comes up with from their meeting on April 10th, that the board would use that percentage to allow the departments to plan for insurance increases.
For preliminary?
Preliminary.
Better we can wait until after our next meeting, and, uh, and you'll have a report for us probably by the 17th.
Yes, and that would be the other, we just, with the dates, we wanted to give them the most time to do their budget, but it's obviously...
And if we do that, if we wait until the 17th, then it just pushes all of our budgeting down further?
Yes.
Heck, we're gonna work on this until the middle of September anyway.
Always happens. That, that would be a board decision, if they wanted to change, we were trying to work it within our timeframe, that has already been approved by the board. If you want the information on the 17th, then of course it, it strings out that process. The department heads are, are requesting, some of them, a little bit more time to prepare their budget, so, um, you wouldn't have a complaint from them.
I would just recommend that we do everything we can to maintain the schedule that we've laid out, and, uh, maybe enjoy the benefit of being punctual.
It's up to the board.
We do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
So basically, that moves us to item C, which would be setting your budget hearing dates for the departments. Um, we've preliminarily set May 22nd and June 12th would be your first hearings.
Can you still meet that?
If we move forward, Julie says we can still meet that May 22nd date, if we schedule a special commission meeting to have her present the initial preliminary budget to you, and then start moving forward with department head budget hearings.
Do we need a motion?
If you would like to set those two dates, yes, please.
What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to set May 22nd and June 12th as special hearing dates for the purpose of budgeting.
And also May 22nd as a special commissioners' meeting, for a budget presentation.
Okay, so, I guess that's what I was thinking, but, yeah, okay.
That's what she said, right?
It was.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
Any, is there a second?
No second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did all department heads put their two cents worth into this, that they would be here for those budget hearings, to, when we get them started?
I have not set out the schedule yet. I will do that this afternoon, and I will arrange according to schedules.
The legislature has a procedure called call of the house, where everything's shut down, everybody's locked in a room until everyone is present. We could probably institute something like that.
Mr. Sheriff, do you have a couple of guys big enough to bar those doors?
Anyway, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Opposed, motion carried.
Did you have something you want? Thank you. Okay. See, D, that, that was covered in the motion, so we are now on the Pennington County elected official salary policy. I think Holly has provided us with a worksheet, discussion about a proposed policy, some other salary information, and was it your thought, Holly, that we do this today or just use this to educate ourselves and put it on the agenda another time?
I think today would be appropriate to hear from the elected officials on their thoughts and concerns, and we can certainly continue to, just to have some more time to think about it.
Okay, so if we want to hear from the department heads, elected officials, Sheriff, you're on the top of the list.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, I've, I've gotten some emails and some phone calls from various department heads. Now, I hope everybody remembers, we're talking about not their salary, not what they're going to make next year, it is what the, basically what the next person who has your job is going to make.
That's correct.
So let's keep it at that, instead of, I want to make as much as this person sitting next to me makes. We're not here for that.
So, just as a clarification, then, if you could. Yes. So whatever we set this at, if we say, for example, the auditor is worth, the auditor's position is worth ninety thousand dollars a year, and our current auditor is making something less than that, then we're going to hold the current auditor at that lower salary until somebody new runs for the office and gets the ninety thousand?
I don't think so.
Till the term, till the term is up.
The...
I, I would, if we're going to say that the new position is worth ninety thousand, why isn't the person in that position now worth ninety thousand?
I would agree with you, but I didn't hear you that way.
No, no, I, 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 but what I'm saying is, I don't want to hear, and I don't think that, probably I will, that I'm not making enough today. It is, what should the person be making that's in, starts this position, basically?
It's two separate issues, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think so.
What we're doing is, is we're discussing what it should be for policy for new people coming in, and then it becomes a different issue if they're making less than...
If they're making less than, my personal opinion is they wouldn't need to raise them.
I would agree with you, Ron. I just didn't hear it that way.
Just, just to back up a little bit on this discussion, in two thousand and nine, the commission contracted for a study for an elected official's wage policy, and we have that study in hand. Some of us have questioned it a little bit in terms of the, what it represents, but be that as it may, bottom line is that without a policy in place, then what do you have?
You just said it.
And so in order to establish a benchmark, that's what we're addressing.
Commissioner Peterson, that's exactly what I was going to say. I thought maybe it would be a good place to start on how we got here. You're right on your dates, we contracted with Condry and Associates to have our elected official salaries looked at, and the thought was then, and that the commission hands out merit increases or denies merit increases to the appointed department heads because they're, that's their supervisor. And then down the chain, the department heads approve or deny merit increases for the people that they supervise. But the issue at hand was that the sitting commission before this one saw, saw issue with the fact that they were recommending or denying merit increases for elected officials when, in theory, they were not their supervisor. And we started looking around, and the results of this study is, one way that you could go on the recommendation of this study was that the salary should be set, and then that way, they're set before an election, and the person running for that position would be aware of how much that position is going to pay, and then there would be no merit approval or denial from this board on people that they technically don't supervise. And so, you know, before we get into numbers and was the study done right, and I do more than this person in the study was, you know, that's, that's for the people in the positions that have some issues with that, but that, what I was just referring to was the philosophy behind why we ended up here. And Commissioner Peterson and I have talked about that, and so that's why this is on the agenda today, and where the discussion can go from here, it's up to you.
I, I, if, it says per the March two thousand and ten study, so I'm, I take it this study was done in two thousand and nine, then?
Yeah, and they was presented...
So it's three years old, and times there, they are changing.
Sure. And we presented this to the previous commission, and it wasn't, there wasn't any action taken. It was accepted and, you know, thanked for your service, but there was nothing done. So if the numbers need to be adjusted, we can do that. There's a list, and I believe you guys have it, of the entities that we talked to. We tried to keep it in the public sector, we tried to keep it in the Midwest, upper Midwest. We try to keep it as close to fair as possible.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Nick, you, you mentioned we. Did you, you were an active participant in drawing this information together?
I was the point person with Condry and Associates to let them know what we needed. We kicked out a few places, that's why I guess we used we. There was a process, they came in and talked to the commission, I believe Nancy and Commissioner Young and myself, and we tried to narrow down what entities we wanted to talk to, what we were looking for. So, yeah, I was an active participant in that.
So, so the jurisdictions that were picked compare with, it was based upon being in this region and being about the same population?
Correct.
Did it have anything to do with the volume of work that that particular office or the type of work that that particular office was assigned to do?
We, we made every effort, and that's when I turned it over to the hands of the professionals, the ones actually doing the study, and they came back with what they felt was the most accurate and fair representation, realizing that not everybody's job duties are going to be the same.
Is, is there any data that they provided that was supporting documentation as to the jurisdictions and the agencies or the organizations that they contacted in those jurisdictions?
The only additional information besides what's in your hands would be our job descriptions that we provided to them and told them, this is what we're looking for, can we get as close to match as possible?
But nothing from the other jurisdictions?
They, I could request that information from Condry, because how they would do it, they would go to them and ask them for their job descriptions, look at it, make follow-up calls.
Okay, so just based upon a job description in a geographic area?
Correct.
All right, thank you. And population.
And population, yes. And I will say, a person sitting in a jo, in a job will look at something and say, I do way more than this. You know, you hear that a lot, and it's probably true in a lot of cases, but when you go out to do these, you realize that you can't compare jobs perfectly because they might not exist, so you do the best you can.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I did some studying on this, and, and I looked at what was proposed, and we have that there, and I'm just going to, Kevin, I'm not just personally picking on you, you're just on the top line, okay? We're proposing...
Remember, he carries a gun.
We're proposing, if we do this, to have that base of a hundred thousand for the county sheriff. And so I kind, I looked at, in this salary plan, the other areas, I kind of tried to figure out under county sheriff, you know, how that really looked with the median and the information and all that sort of thing. And I looked a lot at, I, I admit, at Minnehaha County. And I, I, I came up with some figures, and I would just like to throw those out, and maybe we have, I have a little different idea of what that base should be than, than what we've been presenting. The only thing I'm not really excited about is raising a county commissioner's salary to twenty-five thousand. I think that's going to be a tough one to do, and when Meade County tried to do something similar, it, it created issues across the state. So I, I'm, I would like to take out county commissioners at this point and discuss the other elected officials.
You have the floor.
Okay, so what I came up with for sheriff balancing everything was ninety-five thousand rather than a hundred thousand. For auditor, eighty thousand. For register of deeds, seventy thousand. For state's attorney, ninety-five thousand. For treasurer, eighty thousand. And again, I, I felt like I was balancing this, having had some experience setting up this kind of thing before in previous jobs, it, I felt like, you know, I, I, I know sometimes they want to, people think, wow, this is discrediting what I do. I really did try to separate myself, as, as Ron talked about. I really did try to separate, I didn't want to, I wanted a faceless person when I was thinking of this, and I, I wanted it to be, what do we tell somebody who's running for sheriff, they're going to start out as salary? And that's where I came up with those figures. It's just, it's not based on what they're doing now, it's based on, if they run for election, they, they are a new person coming in, this is what I would propose. So, open for discussion, certainly.
The auction will begin.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts on that. Do each of the department heads wish to comment? Sheriff, tell them.
Just a couple of quick points, and I'll be brief. One, I do support the concept of putting the elected officials on a separate wage scale, and the reason I say that is, I think the non-elected department heads kind of got caught in that snarl last year and didn't get merits because you didn't know what to do with the elected officials, so I think because of that reason, there's value in separating the two, so you can deal with them independently and not hold up the non-elected department heads. I did send you an email with some talking points advocating why I think my position should be where it should be, and the main thrust of that was, in the current wage scale, I'm a twenty-eight, which is the top of the scale, state's attorney was a twenty-seven. On the proposed Condry scale, I slid below the state's attorney, and I advocate that it should be at least equal to the state's attorney, and detailed out the reasons why, in particular, that I feel, I fill two elected positions, both the coroner and the sheriff, and then there's a scope of the duties, as I outlined in the email. With any study, you as a body have a right to accept, reject, or modify, you know, what was proposed to you. I've personally worked with Steve Condry when I was at the city on some salary study, salary studies that we did. I'm a little perplexed by some of the information in the study. It looks, frankly, incomplete to me. I'm not sure what he used for the basis for coming up all the numbers, other than just some hard data. I don't know what the meat and potatoes, so to speak, was of how he arrived at his analysis, so I'm not sure, I guess I question the methodology to some degree as to how he arrived at the numbers he did. This study was done in two thousand and nine, and, or Commissioner Troutman's, you know, suggestion as to setting salaries, one, it's below the, what's even proposed, and if you take the two thousand and nine numbers, just in the county alone, there was a one percent COLA in two thousand and ten, and then a two percent COLA after that, so just, the scale is, is dated already, and there's been COLAs since then, so I would encourage you to, you know, factor that into your decision as to where you actually set the salary. So with that, I'd certainly stand for any questions or let fellow elected officials speak, so.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Sheriff. Auditor, you wish to comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I'd like to just ask Commissioner Troutman a question as to her numbers, and, and...
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to argue about your numbers, I'd just like to understand how you arrived at those numbers, because they're different than what the Conroy study said, and, and I, and I'm wondering what, what you used as a basis to set those.
When I looked at, I, I went through and I looked at these, I looked at all of, of the numbers that were there for, I guess the one I have here right now is register of deeds.
Okay.
And when you look through, and, and you have your mean income and your median income, I, I, I went by a, a lot by that, and I did look at Minnehaha County a lot. I felt that Casper, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get information, some of these that I think might have been pretty close to us weren't. But if, I also know that out in the salary world of, of non-government, these are pretty darn good figures. And, and to some extent, I, that has some bearing to me. So that's where I came up with them. I'm not set to fight about it or anything like that, but, but I felt like we needed to really seriously look at what we pay as a county, what we can afford as a county, and these are pretty high salaries. So that's kind of where I was at, that was part of the consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Anyone else have the elected official wishing to comment? The auditor is next.
Two or three years ago, when this was set forth before that board, they determined that it wasn't the direction that they wanted to go, nor did they believe that the way they were doing it was in conflict with state law. The salaries that are set, I think in the Condry study, if you apply cost of living, which is what their flavor of their proposed salary study should be, would, would need to be done to their numbers, then you'd also have to address, what do you do with existing elected officials and their salaries? And the statement that no one knows what they're going to make when they start at the county as a new elected official is, is really somewhat false, because we do have a wage scale. I think that the elected officials deserve merit as for how we do our, perform our jobs, so I support the old system, realize and we can definitely make changes if that's the board's desire. It will compress the scale even further with the other department heads, with the department heads that are on the same grade level as the elected officials, that they will move forward with merits, whereas we will become stagnant, except for cost of living, and there's an inequity there, as well as the biggest difference, I guess I see that as the biggest difference, realizing, yes, we can make any change that the board sees fit, but I don't see that our existing scale and, and merit is, is out of the question. I don't think it's defiant to state law, I think it keeps us, even Steven with the appointed department heads that we're working with, that have been determined that our rates are, that our jobs are equal to theirs, which we will soon fall behind. It will even further compress our scales, to the point of our chief deputies will be moving up with the merits and the elected officials will not, so pretty soon, you'll have them making much closer to the elected official's salary. I do think that the longer a elected official's salary, or elected official is in their position, they do earn direct knowledge with regards to the county, that you're not going to get from someone new. they do earn direct knowledge with regards to the county that you're not going to get from someone new. So I do believe there needs to be some type of way of, of rewarding those elected officials for doing their job and for doing it well for, for the county. So, and in every study that we've had done, another disagreement that the prior board had with the Condry study was that in every study we've had done, the auditor, treasurer, and register of deeds have all been at different levels. And it's only the commissioners that have changed those to the same levels. And again, this one comes out with them at, at different levels, which is against the philosophy of, of the, the past boards since, since we started doing wage studies. There's always been that issue between the three female department elected officials in the courthouse. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Register deeds?
I have to echo what Julie did say, concern about working with the other appointed department heads. And concern about the chief deputy would also be possibly if the person has had that time with the county could easily surpass the newly elected individual for salary. I did comment to you guys, to, to the board about concerns about why the three elected offices were considered, the auditor, treasurer, and the register of deeds were set at different wage scales. True, we do not function the same, but we do handle large amount of money. The register of deeds does have a lot of responsibility and each of us have a lot of responsibility and accountability to the public and to keep, keep ourselves out of lawsuits, et cetera. So that's, so I do echo what Julie did say, commented to. That's a big concern. That was one, one of the things I was kind of baffled about as to how will that work? About being equal to the appointed department heads and the chief deputy moving ahead of the elected official. So, thank you.
Anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of the state's attorney? Thank you.
Once again, he's not here.
Well, I agree with the leaving the merit increases for elected officials intact. I do agree with that. However, as far as the Condry study goes, I think it was an unfair study. I don't think the comparisons that were used when Julie said the difference between the auditor, the treasurer, and the register of deeds. I understand there are differences. However, when this Condry study was done, the treasurer was not included with the city of Rapid City. The statements that they gave as far as what they do in other counties, in North Dakota, Iowa, and Wyoming, they were not comparing apples to apples. Some of those counties do no title transfers at all in their office. Some of them don't do motor V. Some of them just collect taxes. So as far as the Condry study goes, you can think that I'm an elected official up here complaining and saying, I want to be on the same wavelength as the auditor. But if you want me to be at a lower rate, then they need to be comparing apples to apples. And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, if we start out with a, a base, I mean, I, I don't think that you can leave that in effect for five years and not review that for elected officials. It, it just seems like that is pretty impractical on the part of the county. But if, if we start out with, whatever we start out with for elected officials, then perhaps we should set up a policy that is reviewed every two years or is reviewed before each election. You know, like if, um, we're coming up in, I mean, Kevin's pretty new, I keep picking on him. In two years, you know, he would run again. Well, it should be reviewed at that time for the base and, and everything would be reviewed. I would not presume to say that you shouldn't review these. And it sort of sounded like maybe that was what people were thinking. I don't think that's right to not review these. And it maybe should be a policy of the commission to review the base that we set up every two years or whatever we decide.
The dynamics of, of this are not unique to Pennington County. And there, over the years, there were numerous activities at the state legislature that attempted to kind of modify the atmosphere or something. I doubt if the law has been updated in terms of the amount that was recommended by the legislature or put in place by the legislature. I think the top salary in current law is like 48,000. And so your comments about updating and staying current, I think are, are significant. We're sort of grabbing the rope in the middle, I think, but trying to wind it up on both ends. That doesn't work too good. But I, I do think it's important that we do set a policy. Yes, please.
Where did you read that from?
It's right on the, it's the very last statement on the actual wage policy. It's not on the resolution, it's on the policy. It should be on the back.
So, so we would do that just before the election to make sure that we get a qualified person to run against the current person that we're paying less than what we think the position should be worth? That makes sense.
Deciding who is qualified is not an act of the commission, it's the act of the public.
And if I could make one, I, I have to echo what Lindell says. From a human resource standpoint, I, I understand that elected officials want merits. But I guess the question that I would have is who makes the determination on whether an elected official deserves a merit or not? You're asking a body that doesn't supervise them to make that determination. And then ultimately, if you turn them down because you didn't think that they were doing a good job, well, isn't that the, isn't that the voters that decide if they're doing a good job or not?
So are you suggesting that we have a special election every two years?
No, not at all.
They didn't think you were, so then where do we go from there? And so that's probably with fallacy with merits.
You decide based on appointed department head like myself, you're my supervisor. If I'm doing a good job and we have the ability to give merits, you give me a merit. If you think that I don't deserve one because there's deficiencies in my work, then you don't give me one. But how do you make that determination on someone that you don't supervise?
I think you kind of make it when you're sitting here for as long as some of these folks have. And make a determination when you see an elected department head that takes four or five months off a year in vacation. That's where I think you have to make that determination of what that salary is worth. And I don't know how you change that when you set a salary of, and I'm not holding to say anything about the sheriff or anything, $95,000 for the sheriff. I think, I think it's wrong when people are gone, the amount of time that some of our elected officials are gone. And I think the taxpayers need to know about that. And that's how they determine what those people are worth and if they're going to elect them again. I don't know how you get that out to the taxpayer and I don't know how they make that decision. But I think it's a necessity that that be done.
Sure. And if I can comment to that, there's, it's difficult to do, but we, when you're doing something like this, you have to separate the position from the person in it. If we decide that a position of sheriff is worth $100,000, then that's what that position is worth to Pennington County. Every position on our wage scale has a worth to Pennington County and that's what we pay them in salary. And the person in that position, if you're a supervisor of them, you decide if the person in that position is worthy of the salary that they make based on the work that they produce. But with elected officials, I don't know, you know, if the people that are elected are not doing a job, if they're taking the amount of vacation that, you know, and they're not here. That's, that's a personnel issue to where if you had supervision duties over them, you could correct. And that's.
What you're saying is we, we really have no authority to discipline them, but we also don't have any authority, as you see it, to compliment them with a, a merit increase. So, I mean, and I don't disagree with that. I may, in fact, I may really agree with it. But then what we would, they would be eligible for is a COLA then, to keep their salary in line. And I.
And the point, the points about chief deputies was a very valid point. If someone is a chief deputy for 20 years and they continue along, you know, the merit steps and they, because they're a good employee and a new person comes in, that's.
The other way to look at that is after 20 years, the chief deputy really knows quite a bit about that office or they wouldn't be the chief deputy. Where there is absolutely no requirement for someone running for that office to know anything about it, to have any education, to have any experience with it. The chief deputy may, may well know 10, 100 times more than the person who just got elected.
They've been in the position for 20 years, that's a very valid point.
And if that's the case, then maybe they deserve to get more money.
If, if we used, and I don't know that I agree with Nancy's figures, but if we use Nancy's figures, would, would there be chief deputies in those various offices at our current, current pay scale that if they stayed for a long period of time, would be making more than the elected official?
I'm sure we got them.
I don't have my wage listing, but I'm just going to take one of them, like the register of deeds. I believe they're.
Because I guess.
Yeah, absolutely. If, if a person topped out at R, it could happen.
If a person, the, the chief deputy classification that we got, if they topped out at the top, they would make more than the, than the elected official.
Based on the number, based on Nancy's numbers, yes.
So I, I guess before I would feel comfortable with setting the salaries and, and, and I worked as sheriff for a number of years where we went to the legislature every couple of years and tried to convince them to raise the base because that's what, that's what you got, was whatever the legislature set. So, but before I would be comfortable in setting those numbers, I'd like to know whether there's, there would be chief deputies assigned under those particular positions that would be making more than them. Because you're right, Commissioner Buskerud, if the chief deputies are for 20 years, they may know a lot and are a great person and has good understanding of the job. But you could also have the elected official be there for 25 years and they know a lot. And, and, and if we're going to say that, that, that the chief deputy, or the auditor is worth $80,000 a year and her, and she can stay there for 25 years and her chief deputy can be there for 20 years and make more than her, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I might just comment that my last direct experience with state government was that the attorney general made less than his chief deputy. And so when Mark Meyer Henry, or Mark Barnett left office, was term limited out, he and, and Long just traded places, Larry Long. And Mark got a raise and Larry took a pay cut. So, you know, I mean, that's part of real life, I guess. But the other element that hasn't entered into this discussion is that 2% COLA for 10, for 15 years raises, it compounds itself. You're paying, paying 2% on 2%. And an $80,000 salary in 15 years becomes $103,000 salary by adding 2% a year. So, you know, we're, we're, we've got all kinds of factors. And every, everything that's been presented here in terms of elements that enter into it, including you go to PETA every two years to lobby. And yet we're here today and we need to make a decision or leave it float. And I, I hope we choose to make a decision.
If I could ask, and I don't know if the elected officials that are here know what their chief deputies in their respective offices could top out at. Do you know that, Julie, what your chief deputy could top at?
I can, I, yeah, right here.
You got it.
Yeah, what's your chief, well, she's a, what, a 20?
22.
22?
Isn't that what they are, Janet? 22.
Well, you're on the top at 22, the top would be 80,000. Eight, $80,087.
And, and is that, that would be the same for the register of deeds and the treasurer? What about the sheriff? Pardon?
We have a scale, is it 25?
25 is.
25 for both state's attorney.
97.
97? Well, I would propose a pay, pay scale then for, for, you said it was 97? 110,000 for the sheriff as a sheriff slash coroner, 90,000 for the auditor, 90,000 for the register of deeds, 100,000 for this state's attorney's office, or 105,000 for the state's attorney, and 90,000 for the treasurer.
How much was the sheriff? What was the register of deeds?
90.
Just to, with a little more information, we did come back and ask why they thought in each of these, the sheriff and the state's attorney made more. And the, basically, the, the quick answer was that the state's attorney was a lawyer and the sheriff usually oversaw a significant number of people and that's why. And those two cases are, the same for Pennington County. If you look at the number of people supervised, the sheriff is far and away the highest supervisor. And the state's attorney does require a law degree, a practicing law degree. That's, those were the quick answers because when the numbers came back, the question was, is why is those two positions always higher? And that's what the quick answer was.
Well, if you'd asked the register of deeds, the treasurer and auditor, they'd probably say it's because they're men and, you know, they're the women.
And I would have to disagree.
But I didn't have anything.
Because anyone can run for anything. A man could be our next treasurer, auditor, register of deeds. A woman could be our next sheriff or state's attorney.
And I, I made, in, in my proposal, I made a difference between the sheriff and the state's attorney because I added slash coroner. So if the sheriff should stop being the coroner and he frankly could stop being that at any time that he wants to because you can't force it upon him, then my, my proposal would be that that would be lowered down to what the state's attorney would be.
Anyone else?
The only thing I've got for, to say for sure that's off top of my list that says this has been a near-death experience.
Well, you want to tell us about it?
Couple of them are armed.
I would like a little more time to, I, when I was working on this, I didn't really think about the, which I think is a problem of the chief deputy making more money. And I need a little more time to digest that.
Could we get that information, Mr. Chair, from Nick? Maybe what that highest level is?
Now that I have it in front of me, I can give it to you right now. And I apologize, I only brought half of my wage scale with me, but Holly was. scale with me, but Holly was so kind to give me the rest. So, you guys, the chief deputy, sheriff and state's attorney on our current scale is a twenty-five. They've topped out at ninety-nine thousand zero seven seven. That's for sheriff and state's attorneys.
Ninety-nine what?
Ninety-nine zero seven seven.
And in topping out, they have to do what?
They have to have received merit increases from wherever they started all the way up to we currently stop at letter R.
Where, where did they start?
Most of them started at A, but they could have been brought in at A, B, C or D based on our current wage, uh, policy. So they were brought, they were hired by the elected official. They were, their salary was set based on their experience and on their education. And then they progressed through the, um, merit increases all the way to our letter R, is where we stop. And they, they can start basically wherever the. You're right, yes. Uh, the people sitting in them now in those positions have been here for a long time and so I don't know where they started. We could get that information.
Mr. Chair. I'd just like to bring up something about this and not, just, and I'll use, uh, Commissioner Holloway's numbers there. For a hundred and ten thousand for the sheriff. Uh, so we're, we've got somebody that works, uh, how many years? Twenty? Uh, to top, to max out, ninety-nine thousand seventy-seven dollars. And then, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna give a new sheriff a hundred and ten thousand when they come in and take over that position. Just be so they're ahead of their chief deputy that may have been there for twenty years. And the state, in its infinite wisdom, whether it's wisdom or not, has said that it ought to be down, the sheriff's salary ought to be down at, uh, forty-eight thousand plus ten percent if he runs the jail. Well, I think that's a little bit on the low side also. But, um, I don't know that we need to be making a policy that absolutely makes the department head, elected department head, higher wages than the chief deputy that's been there for twenty years. I don't, I don't know how you justify that with, just, just because the guy's taking over now. In this state, we had a, we had a sheriff here a while back, you remember? They elected and had no idea, I guess, didn't know that he wasn't a certified law enforcement officer. So then they had to kick him out, but in case that happened in Pennington County, we'd give the guy a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year when we found out that he wasn't eligible to even be the sheriff. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Wait, just, just.
I, I would like to respond because he's talking about the figures that I put out in justification for him, not, I, I'd like just to explain what my justification is. Because what, the salary that we're setting for this is what that position is worth. And, and we're saying it's gonna be worth that for whatever, forever, I guess, until we would readjust it again. And I'm just saying that if we have a person who's elected and continues to get reelected for twenty-five years, that, and they have a chief deputy that follows them along, that, that, that position ought to be worth more than a chief deputy. I mean, the, one of them's been there twenty-five years, the other one's been there twenty years.
But if only one of them's been there one year. You're offering to give them a hundred and ten thousand to start with.
We're saying what we're, what the value of the position is.
Okay, let's, let's hear from Sheriff Tom.
Well, since we've been picking on the sheriff, I thought I'd offer a couple of comments. Um, you know, Condry in the study does differentiate two different starting salaries. And the higher salary they use was because they excluded elected officials from getting merit. And by starting them higher, you'll avoid some of that compression that was talked about previously and goes to the point what Commissioner Holloway was just talking about. So you'll eliminate some of that compression because they aren't gonna get the merit increases over time. In terms of people being qualified or not qualified for positions, um, I come from a little different paradigm. I came from the outside, being fairly new to the county. I didn't come up through the county system. I brought thirty-one years of experience to the county. I had experience at the state level and at the city level. And I think that brings a value to my position. And if you want good quality people to run for your elected positional, positions to manage the county, then you have to have a competitive salary to entice qualified people to run for those positions. And I think that should be factored into the equation, uh, as you're discussing this. And Commissioner Davis, to your point about somebody running for sheriff that's not qualified, I can tell you at DCI, when I ran the law enforcement training academy by state statute, anybody that is going to run for sheriff has to submit an application to law enforcement training, either be currently certified or certifiable. And I can tell you, I actually, um, denied some applicants the ability to run for sheriff because of criminal history, other things that were prohibited within the rules and the statutes. So there is a vetting process, at least for sheriff, to get be certified or certifiable to even run for the position.
Well, I've been noted, I've been noted as a certifiable maniac or something. It's all right.
Thank you.
Do you wanna set your salary?
I already have fourteen-four.
Nick, you were gonna go to those other chief deputy spots.
And I apologize about that. The, the red, the other three that we're discussing, the auditor, the registered deeds and the treasurer, at the current scale, they are all a twenty-two, which tops out at eighty-one thousand six nine zero.
Okay. I think we're gonna move on, uh, in some fashion here and, um, someone made, uh, suggestion that they wanted some more th- time to think about it. I think that was Commissioner Busch. Analyzing the situation, I think we should appoint, uh, Shannon Me- Shannon, uh, Redberger to prepare a PowerPoint.
No.
That was a good idea.
We'll meet you at the flog and post at two o'clock.
So, uh, we need a motion to move on?
Oh, I don't think indefinitely.
You, you had the idea, so you make the motion.
Branding furnace.
You, you make the motion.
Uh, I, I, I'd be ready in two weeks to, so I'll make a motion to postpone this for two weeks. Let's get it over with.
Second.
Pain over with.
Motion in a second to postpone this item for two weeks till April seventeenth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item twenty-eight on the agenda. You folks have been pretty patient.
What I wanna know is where does this guy's insurance money go to? Bring his house down and then he makes an special account.
Proceed. Identify yourself and.
My name is Bernie Leach. I got in a bind with the county because I didn't get this cleaned up in time and due to, due to weather and health. And, um, I appreciate that the county helped me out with this. If I known what the cost was going to be, I would have hired someone like Skull Construction or somebody who said they could have done it in one day. The people who did this job took two and a half days to do it. They sorted through the burned wreckage for whatever they could scavenge. Their boss showed up to pick up two bottles of booze they found. And I have two witnesses to that and I can have an affidavit for that. Without our permission, we had bought in a big dumpster for, for ourselves. It wasn't ours. They filled that up with this garbage. And, um, second to the last page there, I put about, you know, a gross, the full amount. And, you know, this is supposed to been charged out at fifty bucks an hour. Gentlemen, even commissioners don't get this kind of wages. At all.
We don't clean up that much.
Yeah. And then after it was done, if you look at the last page, I received that from the county that it still needs to be cleaned up. So we had to hire somebody to come in and finish cleaning up this mess. After, they wanted me to pay this almost thirty-four hundred and fifteen dollars, or three thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars for, for twenty hours of work. And I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt. If I had any chance of knowing what it would have charged cost, I could have went to the bank and had professional care. But I'm just wondering what qualifications it takes to get this kind of work. These were two labors, you know, not highly qualified. I never did see the generator at a hundred and eighty bucks. And I don't know where they take their garbage, four hundred and fifty bucks for forty yards. And who's paying for the garbage I had to haul out that they filled up mine with? Plus the next day, after that, I got a, another letter regards to cleaning up the mess. I, I'm just asking for help, suggestions. And I admit I did need help with this project. I, I did, just because of circumstances. But, oh, you know, I'm supposed to be working for the people. This sounded like it was working for somebody else. And I do appreciate your folks' time. I see it's very precious.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Mr. Leach, was there any homeowner's insurance on this?
No.
Nothing at all?
This, go back to the beginning. A divorce was proceeding. The day of the fire, he was required to put on renters insurance. This night.
Renters insurance is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about homeowners.
Just liability. You know, if something happened to somebody, that's all we carry. We have a five hundred thousand dollar policy. But we've had that home in there for, since it was almost new.
And you rent it, rent out?
Yeah.
Without any kind of coverage? Wow.
Well, just liability. But, you know, my fault, may bad, I understand that. But this was arson too, you know? But, you know, I do admit we needed help to get this cleaned up. I'm just asking why so much?
So, I mean, we hired this guy to go mount and clean this up, correct Dan?
Yes.
And so we owe the money. And if this gentleman doesn't pay it, then I'm gonna pay for it as a taxpayer. Ain't gonna happen. My book.
Rex said he has something out there. I don't know what he, what he has, but.
Mr. Leach, good to meet you.
Yeah, talk to you.
I'm Rex Zacharroll. I'm the code enforcement officer with the county. Um, I did, uh, talk to Mr. Leach here many times. As you can see the timeline, it started January fourth. And the actual cleanup was February twenty-fourth. And every time I talked to Mr. Leach, he would tell me, yeah, I'll get to it, I'll do it. And I believed him. He's very persuasive and very honest, I thought. And I, I think he really wanted to do it. And so I actually talked to Dale's trailer removal. And he said, there's no way that trailer was gonna move out of there without it being tore down. So I thought, well, maybe we could get some equipment in there. And there's a septic system really close to where the trailer is. So the contractor said, no, let's not do it with equipment. It would have been cheaper. So everything was hand, uh, tore down by hand. Um, I got three quotes, um, and I think I have that attached or in their, my power presentation. And the one that I used was fifty dollars an hour. It was the cheapest out of all of them. The highest was up to ninety dollars an hour. And of course, they couldn't tell me how long it would take because all the personal possessions were in that trailer when it burnt. And the fire department came and put it all out. So there was a lot of personal property in there, a lot of weight. And it's unfortunate that it took that long. There were three people there. I went on Friday at ten AM. There were three people working. There was a generator going, I heard that. Um, and then on Saturday, also went over around two o'clock in the afternoon to check out progress. And they were still working on it and they had probably another day's worth of work to do. I add up the hours what I think they had and I, I think they're pretty fair with their seventy hour, seventy-two hours that they put in on it. And if you figure it out, he actually did discount it too for the county because he does a lot of work for the county. And it's below fifty dollars an hour for three people. I, I don't think that's unreasonable. And it was very dangerous. The roof was lift, blowing up and down. And if you remember back in January, February, the wind was, it was very windy. And they, they did salvage stuff. I, I asked the contractor about the alcohol. He said, yeah, I put stuff in different places in my vehicle, his truck, and he, if it's tin, he puts it in a different position because he's not gonna pay to have, um, recyclables destroyed or buried. I, it's unfortunate that it did cost as much because I, I could have done it cheaper too, myself personally. But I think with two guys, it probably would have took two weeks to do it by hand. And that's, I figure eighty hours for that. And I think it's, there was a lot of stuff there.
You know, it still took twenty hours. And I, my guys never seen more than two people there. I mean, I'm just saying what they said.
Sure.
And then, you know, they didn't seem to hurry to get it tore down and finished up. And we had it this far already. And we'd worked on it, I suppose, a total of two days, you know? And we tried to be as careful as we can.
Right there, that picture? The contractor did leave that and you're right, or, um, Mr. Leach, because that was all frozen because the water, and then it was so cold that it just froze and they were out there trying to dig it. And by the hour, I said, no, just leave it. You know, it'll, we'll let Mr. Leach take care of the rest. And they did fill the trailer with permission from me because the contractor called me and said that he talked to one of your workers and they gave permission. Whether that's true or not.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to say, you, you, you mentioned several times about your guys didn't see this or your guys didn't see that. Well, who, who are your guys?
Well, I had two older gentlemen there helping me. And, um, we had this trailer there sitting empty at, you know, we'd started on this project.
Who were they helping?
Me.
Okay, well, why were they there when the county's guy were there?
Well, they were there first.
Who, who was there first?
My guys.
Rex, is that true, that he had guys out there?
He did have one person there over the course of a month and that's about the extent you got on it right there. And that's when, and then they started to scrap it out and took the aluminum off to take that to get the scrap price off it. And then all the insulation was then blown around in the neighborhood. Honestly, I felt I was doing the neighborhood an injustice in my job. They dealt with a lot of stuff for two months.
I do agree with the insulation, you know, that was some, our problem. It should have been tucked inside. Our intent originally was to collapse it down on itself and go to the dump with it. And I had, um, uh, Dale's trucking is a, a good friend of mine. And I'd already paid for it to be deposited in the, in the dump out at, uh, Box Elder, Warner Gears. It cost three hundred and fifty bucks. It would have been great if it all would have worked together. And then, you know, we tried to move it and it, it just wasn't a no-go. You know, I, I was afraid we'd end up out on the highway, you know, on the ground. Then I'd really had a mess and expenses, so. No, I, I did, if I would have known what it cost, I have no problem with the county coming to help me at all. That is not, it's just the cost of it that upset me.
You know, Mr. Chair, I have to back to the insurance. I mean, that's why we carry insurance. And, um, um, perhaps it's an unfortunate lesson, but um, this is why you carry insurance is to be able to deal with that.
Yeah, up, up to the year before, yeah.
You know, I, I guess there's some personal responsibility there. And, and I would have hated to if, you know, you, you didn't have insurance and it burned over into a neighbor's yard and destroyed their home, you, you'd have a bigger mess, so.
I, I have liability for that.
Well, that's unusual that you can buy just liability. I, I'm, I have to question that.
It's five hundred thousand dollar policy. Not much you can do about an arson either.
Well, Mr. Leach, I, I think that Rex and the planning department did the responsible thing to get it taken care of.
I, I agree with that.
And, um, I think by the looks of this thing from January fourth to March twenty-second, um, there was plenty of room in there someplace for you to get people out there and take care of the stuff. And why you didn't have insurance on it is beyond me because I'm not here to tell you that you ought to gotta have insurance. That's not my job. But I can tell you this, if you just. But I can tell you this, if you just, if you'd have taken that insurance premium for how many years you've had it there, put it in the bank, you'd have way more enough money to cover it, to clean it up. So, my motion would be to deny.
I'll second that. You're not trying to say that you're gonna require everybody in this county to have insurance?
No.
Okay, because the Supreme Court is not gonna allow that.
Just as long as the county doesn't have to continue to clean them up and pay for
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Leach. We have a motion to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Are you still awake back there? Okay, we have a request for waiver of road requirements.
One thing, Les, you learned a lot about government today, didn't you?
That's right. More than you want to.
More than you want to.
Hello, my name is Les Tiltrum. I am, Dad's gonna pass around some pictures here for you. I'd like to request permission to improve a section line for the access of one single dwelling, basically a driveway from a house. The roadway would be on section line, between section line nine and ten, Township Two, Range Eight, the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter. I'm requesting not to have engineered plans for the roadway, but I'm willing to build a sixteen-foot wide road with culverts where needed and a ditch for adequate drainage. I got some pictures there for you to look at. There's a drawing in there, and I'll only be coming in on the section line a hundred and fifty feet from my driveway. And I guess there's a...
Dan, could you explain where we're at in location on this thing?
This is south of Rapid City, off of Highway seventy-nine right here, and then Dauphin Bow Road comes off and then goes to the east. And then this is the section line he is looking to improve. The section lines, of course, by state law are set up as public right-of-way and have to abide by improvements. If they're going to improve them, they have to be engineered and designed by ordinance fourteen to a certain standard, which is...
What side of the section line is he working, or gonna build on, or...
Oh, I believe he's gonna build down the center of the section line, which is...
Is that correct? The road will be down the center of the section line?
Where's the property at that he's going to be...
This property right here.
Correct. There's forty acres there, right there on that corner. Maybe the southwest corner there.
This is currently section line road. This is all section line road here. And then this, of course, is section line here.
Dan, didn't we have one of these very similar type of situations out in north of town, I recall?
North of the airport.
Was it north of the airport? I mean, it was just about identical where the road made a bend like that, and there was a section line, and people were wanting to put a house out there and didn't want to have the, what did we do with that piece of property? Do you remember?
He was required to improve it to a certain standard. I don't remember exactly what standard it was. But we also had one, Pat Hall came in to do a section line down Spring Creek. And that section line, of course, was just allowing access to one property. It was on a very steep cliff, and he was required to, I think he went to a fourteen-foot wide, and he didn't do engineered road plans either. And his section line was gonna be, there was only one way to get to it, which was pretty much climbing ropes, other than his private access easement that went to his section line.
So, you think what they're, what this gentleman is proposing is consistent with what this board has done in the past with other similar type requests?
With one other request, yes.
With one other?
Yeah, which is that one section line for Pat Hall. The other one, he was still required to engineer the plans and build it to a certain standard. He was allowed to reduce it to a certain standard.
They own all of this.
My name's Jim Tiltrum, Les' dad, and I actually own the land all the way around this forty acres where it's going. So, my, my property, the houses right there, right there, and then I own the land to the east of where the portion of the, not that, quite that far down, and then to the south, not south, but north and west. So, that section line goes through a half mile over to Dewey Lane, which there's already a road built to county specs that goes to that development there. So, that actually, there's no purpose for that road to ever go through because if it does, I own the land there, I will have to be selling it, I guess, at a later point. And if we did ever plan anything like that, truthfully, I don't want all the traffic coming past my house. I would have them come in on Dewey Lane if there was something, if I ever did something else with the other acreage by the development. So, we're doing forty acres in that southwest corner.
I think Commissioner Busker would probably tell me if I am or not, but if somebody decided that they wanted that road, that section line open, you couldn't stop them from building that road to go in there. So, that's...
Purpose where would it go, though?
Well, that's, that's really beside the point. It could go off a dead-end cliff, but they could still do it if they wanted to.
There's no, there's no, currently no road down there, path down there, or...
That is existing approach. You got one picture there?
Yeah, but, but I mean, from, once you, you get off of that, going, going north, that's... I mean, what I'm concerned about is if we, if we allow this and two cars meet and run into each other, we probably have a problem then liability-wise because it's a section, section line highway. But if there's no traffic along there...
There's no traffic there, it'd drive, just be his driveway at this point in time, driveway to his, to his house, from the corner there.
Dan? Excuse me, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Dan, what, rather than come up to the section line, then they own this property, what would be the problem with coming on the inside of the section line and coming up and then doing this loop over if that's what they wanted? And then you, then you've got no problem at all. You don't have to ask for anything.
We have a problem with another section line. If he continues on down here, or continue on down there, this is another section line. That's neighbors, so we have to do the same thing there, is approve section line. And there's also power lines that goes over the house development, approximately, probably thirty-three feet from the center of the road. So, if we go anything to the east, we would have to move all the power lines if...
We suggested, actually, they could actually move the driveway to the west, come across this property, and then go straight across.
But he's still using the section line for a driveway?
He crosses the section line, but we've had a discussion with our county highway superintendent if they're just crossing the section line. We haven't made them, or they haven't made them, improve it to section line highway standards.
Highway has some safety here. What we would prefer, I've talked, I've talked to Mr. Tiltrum on this before. The other option was, yes, like Dan said, could access through his father's property and cross the section line, and he has no problem with crossing section lines as, as far as meeting ordinance fourteen. But the problem with that would be they should have a permanent access easement if they do that. Then, for safety reasons, the highway would be probably prefer that that section line was improved or used because then you have traffic coming straight on with this, this road here, and you have a square intersection rather than offsetting that. The other issue you were talking about, Dan, or Don, that person wanted to come in from a section line at this angle for their access, and we want to get away from that. The safest thing is to have everybody lined up, and actually, it'd be best to, even though it's a private driveway, maybe let them improve that section line at a lesser standard since it's going to one dwelling for now. But let them improve that in, say, a hundred feet from that intersection. Their driveway is actually ninety degrees to that section line. In the future, if anybody was to develop and bring more traffic to this road, the road would have to be improved at that time, of course, for safety reasons. But this existing driveway would be at a ninety degree to that section line already rather than making them tear out this and when somebody else developed that section line. So, from highway standpoint, it would probably be at this time for a single dwelling, best to let them use that section line probably at, under the minimum standards of ordinance fourteen, which is twenty-four foot, two-foot ditches, eighteen-inch culverts.
Mr. Chairman. Dan, is this, the requirements here are under ordinance fourteen?
Yes.
Well, I haven't read ordinance fourteen for a long time, but is there, I'm not sure, is there something in there that says we can waive those requirements? Because we can't just waive our ordinances whenever we feel like waiving them.
Yeah, I don't know where this came from, but that's, that's...
You can waive it. Okay.
That's what Mandy told us, too, that some of you guys, and those could be, gardens could be waived, but she told us that's why we're here, to waive that a different requirement. She'd rather not, I don't know, but that's what we were told.
And they have in the past many times, but they have still required engineered plans other than the one.
Of course, what this board has done in the past is not always the right thing to do.
Was it advice they were getting in the past?
Well, it's bad advice. I'm making a motion to let him do the, exactly what he wants to do.
What is that? What is it that he wants to do? Sixteen-foot, four inches of gravel?
Yep.
No ditches, no culverts?
No, no, culverts and ditches.
It'll be ditches and culvert for adequate drainage.
About the only thing that you don't want to do is supply plans and a sixteen-foot instead of twenty-four-foot.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Have motion to second. We've had discussion. All in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
Thank you.
You want, you wanna take these back in case, colored ones, in case you need...
You gotta show them to the next, next hoop, next jump.
The ones I didn't see. Maybe you'd understand if I saw that.
There is a, just went back on this one question here on this one here. We had a surveyor come out, and that is a marker for the section line. So, if that is true, the two roads are not, are existing there are not on the section line. They're off, off, built on one side of the road. So, in a sense, if that marker's in true location, the surveyor guaranteed us that is the marker of the four sections. So, and that's off of to the east and off to the north. So, if we do put the road straight where we're talking, it's gonna be most of it on my property anyway, if that is, if that is correct. But he says he can't say that is one hundred percent unless somebody, unless somebody moved it down the road, you know.
Okay, we have a consent agenda for planning and zoning, and Dan's standing there, ready to, ready to go.
Well, item D was inadvertently put on by mistake in the consent calendar. Our recommendation was different from what planning commission did, so I'm asking to pull that from the consent calendar.
Item B?
D as in dog.
D, oh, sorry. Okay, so then we have items A, B, C, and E?
Yes.
That are still on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Anyone wishing to remove any of those items? Preliminary plat for Eli and Patricia Rodoff. Preliminary plat for William and Nancy Ewing, another one. A first reading of a rezone, and then the respec contract modification for Spring Creek. Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I have one thing, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if we've done it before, but first reading in public hearing, we put public hearings on the consent calendar?
This, they want to extend their, postpone it for two weeks, I think it is.
Yeah, we're continuing it for two weeks.
Yep.
And we have put rezonings on consent calendar.
I don't mind, I don't know if you should be doing that in public hearings or not.
I did discuss that with our state's attorney's office, and he indicated that as long as it's brought up on the agenda, listed out, it's still a hearing, and you're still hearing the item.
I just wanna, with the paper here, I want to make sure we're, we're doing everything transparent and in the public interest. You wanna write that down? Okay.
So, we don't get sued again, you mean?
Any further comments or discussion?
I'm done.
Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of D.
Second.
Motion to the second. Approval of the consent calendar with the removal of item D. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried.
Item D is a first reading in a public hearing and a rezoning request. Kenneth, our twelve oh-three, for Kenneth and Candace Brunns to rezone forty acres from general ag to limited ag zoning district. Planning commission did recommend approval of this rezoning request. It is located at one three seven two seven Ruthie's Trail, one mile east of the intersection of Pine Grove Road and Ruthie's Trail, and it does involve forty acres. Rezoning the property to limited ag would allow him to create four ten-acre lots. This was, and you have seen this before through a variance request, the variance request was actually to create one ten-acre lot and a thirty-acre lot, and it was actually deemed more appropriate to create the, or rezone it when you see it surrounded by three lots, or three sides as limited ag. He still has, the person he was intending to sell the ten-acre lot, that fell through, but he still intends to rezone it to limited ag at this time, not selling any of the ten acre lots to anybody. The issue that really comes up, and the reason why staff is recommending to continue it, is that we and planning commission had made it clear in other times that they wanted to see percolation tests and soil profile information. He has not submitted that information, and he still would like to have the property rezoned without submitting that. And he indicated that he would submit that at the time of building permit, which is required at that time. But even staff would like to see it, although it isn't in our ordinance, to see percolation tests and soil profile information to make sure that a drain field will be able to be put on the property before it is rezoned. And as with a rezoning request, you cannot put conditions on it, and that's why staff was recommending that it be continued until he did the soil profiles and percolation tests.
Ken Brunns, property owner there, and, and yes, this has been discussed and gone through the aspect of a variance itself the first time, and, and again, knowing that's kind of where we started with this, the monies then were transferred over and, and made available to do this under a rezoning, which probably should have been where it was at in the beginning. In doing so, and coming to find out with the rezoning, the percolation tests and the profile tests would be required. And from that aspect of it, I should rephrase that, that it wasn't required, it was suggested. Rezoning to an appropriate ten-acre, four-ten-acre lots out there is within ordinance of, of the county here. As far as the percolation and the profile tests, yes, that would be done at the time of the sale and is required at that time then. And certainly within the discussions and that, that have happened there, there is adequate area within each of those ten areas to be able to come up with some kind of an adequate septic system there.
You, the comments have been made that they protest or recommended, and yet, they're not required for rezoning.
That's my understanding. They are not required. Planning commission in the past, I have to say in the past, didn't like to approve any rezoning request without knowing that a drain field can be put on to the property. I should say recommend approval, not approve, but recommend approval of a... I should say recommend approval, not approve, but recommend approval of a rezoning request without knowing that the soils in the area will support a typical onsite wastewater treatment system.
And then you move to the question of sale of the property. And just because you sell it doesn't mean somebody's going to build on it.
That's true also.
And so, if the requirement is you, you want to build and you apply for a building permit, then you have to have a perk test or some other plan relative to waste disposal.
Correct.
And then if you look at the county map and you look at how many lots, whether regardless of their zoning category that are sitting empty and have never been sold, do they all have to have perk tests just because they're sitting there?
Obviously not. You know, I mean, and that's part of why I've made the comment too. And, and you can see right here, I had started doing the percolation tests on it in drilling holes. Well, then in discussing it further, a profile hole means an eight-foot hole that someone can literally walk down, look at the profile on this, and this is pasture land to disturb that amount of land. And each of the, the three additional lots that are not there, that would be the, the other 10 acres that's now our permanent residence and in the north, the west corner of that property. So, I mean, because of that, that's why in discussing this further and finding out that it was not an actual, it was only suggested, it was not a requirement to do the percolation or the profile hole.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I don't think maybe this is the place to put septic tank requirements, the drain field requirements because they can do so many other things than the holding tank thing, but non-conventional systems. They can, they can do all of this stuff. And in 10 acres, you ought to be able to find a place to, to put a septic system of some kind on the 10 acre parcel.
What, what the percolation test and soil profile tells us is that it will support a typical onsite wastewater treatment system. And the planning commission has indicated to, and we feel the same way as staff, that why rezone a piece of property? And this, this area was classified as severe soils. And that's part of the reason why too, we, we wanted to see the soil profiles and the percolation tests.
That's why we've got all of these other systems that you can use if required to do so. So I, I guess I'd make a motion to uphold the planning commission's recommendation on rezone 1203.
Second.
And the planning commission's recommendation is what?
To approve the rezoning request.
Any further discussion? Have a motion and a second to uphold the planning commission's recommendation? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Any further comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm getting liberal in my old age. I'm getting pretty liberal in my old age.
Yeah, we're going to...
I'll be voting Democratic next day, next thing you know.
The aging of the commission is not on the agenda.
Can we put this next item on the next, next commission meeting and get on with our executive session? How long does this go to take, Dan?
It all depends on you.
I'd make a motion to postpone the next item to the next county commission meeting.
I'll second that.
What it was, was the, the discussion was regarding variances and whether or not staff would make a recommendation on any variances. Rather, we just do a staff report that listed the facts, what the property was zoned, what they were asking for and the circumstances regarding it. And then staff wouldn't make a recommendation and then it would be up to the board to make the decision based upon what is in the staff report.
Mr. Chair, I could probably defend my position better today than I could two weeks from now on this particular item, but we just went through one of that, exactly what I've been talking about. That I don't think staff should be saying yea or nay. They should be saying these are the facts. And the last one just proved that. No, absolutely not. The last one just proved that that, I think, staff needs to give us the facts and let us make the decision.
But you made a motion to postpone this item.
Well, I did, but I, I'm just saying, I should, I can defend my position better if I do it today rather than tomorrow.
I'm confused.
Well...
I, I, there's been a motion made and seconded. I think we should vote on because the way it's starting to sound, this could be a long discussion.
You're calling the question informally. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
It'd just be difficult. All right. Now, are we going to postpone the next motion too?
I don't think so.
What is it? Any items from the public?
Where's our friend?
Next motion, next item, executive session.
I'll make that motion. Do we need it?
Yeah.
You second it? Moved and seconded to go into executive session?
In seven minutes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Seven minutes, I'm... Our executive session.
Second.
We seconded about an executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I make a, a motion to authorize the offering, presenting a job offer to the applicant for IT director.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are you okay with that, Holly? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to resign, I mean retire, I mean adjourn.
Do you have another motion?
What?
To approve Sharon sending the letter to the...
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. You send the letter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Anything else we're forgetting?
Can't make the same motion twice.
There was, there was a separation in the middle of it though. There's a different plan, so I can't, yeah. I make a motion to resign.
Move. I'll second it. Okay, we're supposed to, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.